Okay. We'll reconvene for my closed session. I'll ask the city attorney if we have any comments.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Council's in closed session this evening on Conference of Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. That item was not concluded and the council will be going back into closed session at the end of the regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. We'll now open our regular council meeting. Seven oh four. Start the roll call, please.
Alvin versus Payne. Here, Claire. Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith? Shelton?
Here.
I'd like everyone to please rise for a silent prayer and remain standing for the flags, please. Chief, I'd like to ask you to start us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I noticed right as I said that the fire chief walked in too, so sorry. We could have the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the government affairs channel, on the Comcast and Shore West cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.ci.galt.ca.us. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address counsel should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing counsel and state your name for the record.
So now we'll have the agenda, verbal additions, and are any deletions? Are there any? I have one item I'd like to pull out of consent, which is E. seven. Yeah. Do the presentation, then public comment. I'm getting advised we're redoing the agenda tonight, so we're gonna ask for any public comment before we go into the presentation.
Um, Fred Gaykoff?
Good evening. Just here to update you a little bit on what's going on with West Nile virus in the area. We've had a couple of positive birds up in the Folsom area. We've also been getting positive mosquito pools in the Elk Grove area. It's about a twenty thousand square, uh, twenty thousand acre area, um, running from Bond Road north, so there's, that's becoming very active and it's kind of a concern because it's early in the season yet. Also, I had a table set up at the Galt House and ran into the president of the Historical Society who had a problem with egrets out at the Ray House. And, uh, I didn't think egrets were a carrier or could harbor the virus. I checked with the district this morning and they can in fact harbor the virus, so they sent out a wildlife biologist who chased a couple down and got blood samples. And actually picked up three dead birds. They are literally dropping out of the trees. If that turns out positive, we will be spraying in the area around the Ray House, just to keep everybody up to date. So time now is just very unrepellent because they are out at dusk and dawn and they are testing positive.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dave Dogland?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dave Dogland. Resident, I was almost gonna say tenant, but a resident of eighteen years here in Galt. And, uh, I'm here to do something, I'm gonna kind of reverse the procedure. Five years ago, Darrell Clare presented me with a certificate of recognition, which is something I totally did not expect, and it was great, and it was for, uh, my involvement with the Western Railroad Museum out in Solana County. Uh, this year marks our fiftieth anniversary of the Western Railroad Museum on Highway twelve between Fairfield and Rio Vista. It's been my hobby for many years about historical things and transportation. And I would like to share that with somebody, and I'm going to do that by presenting something to a good friend of mine who I've only known for about a year and a half, mostly due to Measure R, and that is Councilman Meredith, who I understand is gonna be moving on to bigger and better things, and I just wanted to wish you all the luck and, uh, success in your new endeavor. In my hand here, I have a book published by the Bay Area Electric Railroad Association, which covers how the first electric streetcar came to San Francisco replacing the horse car and the cable car. And therefore, uh, also, with manpower comes labor, and I'm going to let, uh, Councilman Meredith know that at one time, there was a horse car union in San Francisco in eighteen ninety-two. And following that, there was one for the electric streetcar, and so forth. And, uh, in this book, hopefully you'll find that, I have a little note in there for you when you open it up. And I just want to wish you, your family, and everyone, you know, all the best. Gonna miss you here. I hate to see you leave. We just got to know each other and you're moving on, but that's okay. Maybe we can, uh, contact each other and, you know, see you around town, put it that way. We'll do that. I'd like very much for you to have this, okay?
Thank you, Dave. Come down and get it.
Wait, turn the other way. Next is Woody.
Well, first I'm gonna start off with, I was talking to the city attorney. I watched a meeting on elections. But he forgot something. On elections, I can give twelve of my employees ninety-nine dollars cash, and I can hand them to anyone of you. And that's all legal. And so, I just want you to know that, so get ready. I hope somebody's got some money here. Uh, and then I was gonna talk to him, but he's not here. I don't, I still can't figure out why he started in a construction area. I know signs and banners, when they're all over town, and a great big one at the library on the grass. That thing is four foot by fifteen foot, and that's a monster. And I got a whole list of different stores here where they had them, you know? And I'm glad Dunn spoke up and said, "We don't want that." And I guess y'all backed it, I wasn't here. And then Sandy said about Lodi. Is Sandy here? Yeah, uh, what happened down there is, uh, we protested. We own the shopping center, Haymarket. We protested three years ago because they lost so many businesses, little ones and big ones, and on account of those signs and banners, and they absolutely threw it out. They will not touch it. Because if you go to Old Town, they got some major restaurants and stuff that moved out. And so, I think it's a good idea to keep them out. I don't even like the idea. And then I gotta bring up another question. I don't know who it's for. But the field next to our store, we've been trying to get that field cut, and everybody passes a buck. We went to the city. The city says, "You gotta see the fire department over here." And then they said, "No, you have to go all the way up to Elk Grove." I went to Elk Grove, and they turned around and told me, "No, go back to your city. It's their responsible part." It's about four feet tall, and it's gonna burn those houses down right behind, so somebody needs to look into that field. And another thing is, on that street, we don't have no property lines. I wanted to put a block wall up beside the store. I went to him. We don't have no maps for that area. All we have is electrical, telephone poles, but no property lines. It's too old. So we don't know where to build a fence.
Um, city attorney, do you want to refresh our memory on our city manager? On who reports, where he reported this vacant lot versus the residential tall weeds and stuff like that?
Sure. Um, generally speaking, the fire district is responsible for weed abatement in the area, particularly if it's a large vacant field and parcels. If it's somebody's home that has weeds and so forth growing, then it's the city's responsibility. We send code enforcement out there, but generally speaking, the larger lots that Woody's referring to is responsibility to consumers, fire district.
Thank you. Okay, Al Baldwin?
Good evening, everyone. Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, in a happy mood tonight. And, uh, I wanted to come here to sometimes tell you the good things that I see in Galt. And I don't hear a lot of good things sometimes, but I do look for them, and I wanted to bring them up and tell everybody how great this city is. We have now a new used bookstore. It's Hooked on Books on Lincoln Way. We also have a place, a new place to eat. It's called Way's Southern Barbecue. It's on West East Street. And it's takeout too. You can take it out or eat in. We have Little Caesar's Pizza in town now. This is really getting good now. We're, we're just growing and growing. We have a new yogurt shop in the Safeway Shopping Center, which is extremely good, by the way, and very nice people. We have an In-N-Out smog shop. You need that smog on your car? Not bad at all. They're on Lincoln Way. And yes, we, and I won't comment anymore, but we, looks like we're getting a new bar in Galt too on Lincoln Way. Uh, and we even have more churches coming into Galt. This is really amazing. This thing is, we're growing with businesses. Now we just have to get more people to come in. And also, I wanted to make a quick comment. Uh, the fire department in Galt's extremely helpful. If you ever moved here, you'll find that out. They're very nice people. I have a new grandson, and they were coming up to visit, and I needed a car seat in the back of my car. So I didn't exactly know how to put it in. I tried, and I was getting frustrated, so someone said, "Go to the fire department." Went to the fire department, and they said, "Well, you gotta make an appointment, and you gotta do this, and gotta get someone." And there was two people there that were extremely nice. One old person about thirty-five, and the other one was about twenty-four. And, uh, they, they said, "Well, we aren't supposed to do this, but, you know, I'll try and help you if you want to," and they did. Excellent job. Got it in. Two days later, my grandson arrived. It worked wonderful. I just wanna thank the fire department, by the way. Um, there's also, we even have a new Galt Herald Tea Party Patriots Group that meets once a week in Galt. This thing is, Galt's just becoming so popular. And, and you know, even Congressman Dan Lundgren, our congressman, by the way, is having a town hall meeting this Saturday, July tenth, at Liberty Ranch High School from ten-thirty in the morning to twelve PM. And it's your chance to speak out and be heard. So if you get the word now and you can make it, be there. It's, it's nice. You get to see a nice new high school. And we had a great event this weekend, this last week. The Galt Festival and Parade, and a super duper fireworks display put on by Parks and Rec. And I wanna thank boys for that. It was an excellent job, and it was wonderful. Uh, Galt is a great town, and it's got character and heart. And if you ever get a chance to come through it, if you're walking this now, or if you know anybody, it's a great little town to, to live in, to visit, to shop in, and just to watch things happen. It, it's just a, a town that's bubbling. Where other towns might be simmering, we're bubbling. So I'm, I'm sure you're gonna enjoy it. There are times, though, when I come to council meetings, I, I found out that maybe sometimes I don't express myself as clearly as I'd like to. I try to look for the good things. I try to mention the good things, but sometimes I don't. If there are times when I unintentionally show disrespect for anybody, which is not my intention, because character is number one on my book, I am so terribly sorry if I offend somebody without even knowing it. It's not my intent to purposely disregard anybody or, or disrespect them. And if I did, I wanna tell you now, because I've had a comment or two, that I'm not that way, and I don't portray myself that way, and if I did, it was all unintentional, and I'm sorry. So, other than that, I think I've covered just about everything. We're in a great town. Let's continue, and good luck. And to everybody that's leaving, Andrew and Darrell, uh, Claire, I'll tell you, this is, this has been an interesting venture. We've all learned something. And hopefully, you're gonna go on, like Dave said, to bigger and better things, and I'm sure you will, 'cause you're, you're quite a councilman. Thank you all, and we'll see you later.
Thank you.
John Slaughterback?
John Slaughterback, I live in the city of Galt. I'm here tonight just for one purpose, to thank Andrew for his service, Andrew Meredith for his service, and, and the job that you've done. Uh, some of the things that I wanted to see, uh, happen, take place, uh, wouldn't have happened if you hadn't been instrumental in being part of it. So I thank you for that. And I wish you good luck in your new endeavor. You've proven yourself to be a leader, a doer. There's not many doers in this world, but you're one of them. And I'd just like to say hasta nos vemos otra vez, till we see each other again. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That's all the speaker seats I have under public comment.
Okay.
Tracy Grove, citizen of Galt, and Andrew Meredith's aunt. This is probably the last time I have to refer to that when I get to come up here and talk, since I keep getting told I have no opinion, so. Andrew is a citizen of Galt, and you're aunt. I want you to know I'm so proud of you. You've done so much good for Galt. You've moved us in the direction that so many of us wanna see for Galt. And, you know, I don't need to be related to you to be happy with how things have turned out and how hard you've worked for Galt. But I wanted you to know that I love you, I'm proud of you, and good luck in everything you do from here out.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other speakers? Well, we have a presentation tonight by the Cool Truck Show, two thousand and ten. Bob?
Well, I'm Bob Hitchcock, Cherokee Truck Works, and these are some of the Shriners from the Stockton area that helped me put on the show for the last three years here in Galt, and, uh, seven before that. We had a kind of a dismal turnout this year, but, um, to put a little personal face on this thing before we go any further, um, I was emailed a letter by a city of Galt employee, and I wanna read the letter I got from her and the response. They kinda put a personal face on what the Shriners Children's Hospital does do for the community. Is that be all right?
Please.
Do you wanna read it?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Bob, I just wanted you to know how much I appreciate all you've done. When I talked to you yesterday, you seemed down about how your event went, and you may not have anymore. Uh, before your first event, I didn't know anything about the Shriners, and by the way, this is from Cherie Smith back over here. I didn't know anything about those Shriners. She explained to me what they did for the children at no cost to the families. Shortly after that, my daughter gave birth to twin girls. One of my granddaughters was born with only one foot, and the other one had something wrapped around it during development, was a third of its normal size. My daughter was very sad and upset not knowing what to do, and I told her what you had said about the Shriners and what they do for children. She contacted them, and within a couple of days, they were very helpful. My granddaughter is now two years old, and Shriners has given her a prosthetic and sees her regularly. There is no way my family or my daughter could have paid for this without the help of the Shriners. Now, here's my letter back to her. This was when I was right on the borderline of nixing the show in this town. Uh, thanks, thank you very much. This one letter makes my worries seem so small. I guess all my eighteen to twenty hour days trying to make sure that all the i's were dotted and t's were crossed, more than worth it. When I first heard about the Shriners, I thought that all they did was drag funny little cars with funny little hats, but it's not quite so, I mean. This one child will make a big difference to all of the people involved in the show. I'm glad we could be part of your family through the Shriners Cool Truck Show. I think you just made up my mind about next year's show, and we need more shows and events like this. These events may seem that they are all about the highly polished and super plain show trucks, but I think every one of us involved know that the kids that we help is what it's all about anyway. Thank you very much for letting me know about your granddaughter. And there she is. Hadn't bid for that one letter from that lady right there. I don't think we'd be doing the show again next year. But because of that, since we know we did help one person, we're on guys for next year. Look for us in May again.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And now, as we've done in the past, um, one of the agreements we had with the city of Galt was half of the gate money that the Shriners collected for the walk-in people went to the Parks and Rec Department. So I have a check here for, I guess, Randy, the mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I said under photo, okay?
And this is the plaque that we, we're doing again this year, Presentation of the City of Galt. Um, imported African rosewood, um, made in Wisconsin with lots of skill and pride, and we'd like to present this to the city of Galt.
Thank you.
It's a real deal deal. One other thing. Hopefully, next year, we can get a little more community participation as far as businesses go. Uh, this year, we ran into quite a few roadblocks. Wouldn't even let us put up posters advertising the show, so. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to circumvent that and get more posters up and get more community involvement, so.
Maybe we can work on, you know, it's not, well, it's not just trucks, and you guys all know how I feel about truckers.
Right.
So I come from a family of truckers and ranchers.
Right.
But it's not the Shriners.
Yeah.
And what you guys do, and the letter was fantastic. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks for allowing us to share that. Appreciate that. I'll pass this around with council members.
Okay, yeah. Also, I got you, a few magazines that has articles in here about the show.
Oh, okay, okay.
Welcome to that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Hopefully, we'll see you all next year.
Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Johnson. I am president of the Samakine Shrine Club in Stockton area. And I would just like to, to thank the city of Galt for making, uh, your picnic grounds, your flea market grounds are available, uh, for us. Uh, Bob Hitchcock has worked very, very hard. He puts his show on every year. And how much have we raised, Bob, over the last several years? We've raised about sixty thousand dollars for Northern California Shriners Hospital. And I can tell you from my heart that the children appreciate it, and the Shriners appreciate it. And, uh, I'd just like to welcome any of you at any time that you'd like to do it, to come up and take a tour of our hospital. We have several tours every week. It's a fantastic facility, and being able to have this truck show here helps us to help them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Maybe next year, you can hit your two hundred mark.
Well, hopefully, hopefully.
Thank you. Well, we have Okay, thanks. We have one more, uh, presentation. Andrew, would I ask you to come down?
Sure.
This young man, I think we all know, but, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your years of service in the military. What you did, fought for our country. I really appreciate that. I think everyone knows how I feel about so much of that. Appreciate it. But also, you came back, you ran a good campaign, you became not only a council member, you became the mayor and the vice mayor. So again, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
I'd like to do, if any of the council members would like to say a few words, I don't wanna put anybody out in the spot. Might I start with Ira?
I just wanna wish you and your family all the best in the future. I know you're getting joy out there in the country, where your heart is. Good luck.
Honestly, uh, anybody who knows Andrew and has spent any time with him, you can tell this is a sharp individual, somebody who's really on the ball. He's really ahead of his years, and, uh, you've done an outstanding job. A lot of the changes that we've seen in the city, you brought forward yourself. And I'm very proud to have sat next to you and worked with you on the council, and, uh, if there's anybody I could ever work with, it would be you if I had to choose again, so I thank you for your time, your effort to the community, and all your, uh, caring and efforts that you've really put into this, so, thank you.
I appreciate it. Darrell, did you wanna say anything?
Yes, if I could, please. Andrew, uh, gonna miss having you up there. Um, obviously not far behind you. Um, I remember the first time we really sat down and talked, uh, when you joined the council, and, uh, one of the things I remember mentioning is that you'd already given a lot to go overseas and serve for our country and our nation and all of us, protect us. And I know that had already taken some toll, obviously, on you as a person, as well as your family, and not just your immediate, but even your extended family. And I know you've given up a lot of that, even since you've gotten back. Uh, each of us on the council learn, once we're there, the amount of hours that it does take to serve the community, but takes us away from our family. So I know you've had to make a decision to, to be able to be with your wife and your children more, and I know you gotta be looking forward to that. So I, I thank you for your energy and your zeal and your fresh ideas, and, uh, I wish you and your family all the best in your, uh, new setting and, uh, in the new time you're gonna have to get caught up.
Thank you, Darrell. I got some comments on my computer up here, so.
Get boys up there.
You can get it. First of all, I wanted to, uh, thank my friends and family that came out tonight for this event. Uh, before I get to detailing my family, I wanted to thank, take the opportunity to thank all of the city officials and city staff members that are sitting in the room tonight. Uh, I'll start with Darrell. Um, I remember when I first got elected to city council, I was so just impressed with the statesman-like presence that Darrell Clare had. And I think anyone that's ever watched him in action at the regional level knows that, uh, he's just, he's an absolute professional. And, uh, when it comes to representing our city at the regional level, I don't think anyone in the history of the community's done as good of a job at that as Darrell Clare has, so. It's been a pleasure serving with you, Darrell. You've, you've definitely been someone that I've, I've You've, you've definitely, uh, been someone that I've, I've looked up to since I've been on the council. All of your years of experience have, uh, definitely helped me grow as a council member, so I appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much, those are very kind words.
And, uh, council member Payne, Vice Mayor Payne, we've disagreed on some things in the past, but, uh, there's one thing that I, I'm never going to forget about you. When I was overseas in Iraq, I remember I had met you at, at your antique store, I stopped by and purchased something for my grandmother, I think, and, uh, you and I got to talking and you knew that I was getting ready to go overseas, over to Iraq. And I remember, it was right around my birthday, and I don't know if you had planned that or, or what, what the deal was, but I got a card from you with a, with a lot of really inspirational things in it, and I'll never forget it. Still got the card and, and everything that else that I got overseas and that's what I'll always remember. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I remember, I remember when you came in there, you bought an angel for your mother.
Okay. Um, council member Haynes, it's been a real pleasure serving with you. I, I met you for the first time out on the campaign trail, I think. Uh, kind of came across each other and didn't know what to think, but, you know, sitting up here with you for the last three and a half, almost four years, it's been an absolute blessing. I, I think, uh, you, you probably in the same boat as I am, you under, you understand now exactly how much of a burden this, this puts on the family and takes you away from so many things and you, your family's just been growing leaps and bounds since you got up here and, you know what, I, I think your kids and your grandchildren, they've got to be just so proud of the job that you've done and the impression that you've left on this community. If you choose to run again for public office, I'll always be there to support you because I think you're a man with a, with a solid vision for the city, and I, I think that's something that needs to resonate in the future.
Thank you.
Mayor Shelton, we, uh, we didn't really get a lot of contact with each other back in the original campaign, but, you know, you've always, you've always been a guy that runs in a clean campaign. You stick to the issues and you did that both of the times that I've, I've experienced the campaign and, you know, the public sees in you a leader, and I, I, I think in a lot of respects you carry forward that fire chief, fire marshal mentality and it, it translates at the public level. So, I think you're doing a good job as mayor for the City of Galt and I wish you nothing but the best for the future.
Thank you.
Liz, our city clerk, is, is kind of like the, uh, the parent, the, the adoptive parent for the five of us up on the council. Her office is responsible for so many things that, that, you know, we, we have to have the function as a city council. Whenever I've needed anything, you've always been there. Whenever, uh, whenever I've ever had a question, you've always been there to answer it. I appreciate that. You, you keep getting elected to this position for a reason, it's because the public knows that you do a good job, and I hope that you stay in this position until you decide that it's time to retire.
Thank you.
So. Inez, our finance director. Inez, I think the economy in the last couple of years has really proven the fact that you do a fantastic job running the finances for the City of Galt. While other cities around us and in the region have faltered and have faced huge deficits, you've always managed to keep us afloat. And, uh, I, I really think that because of the heightened scrutiny that's on all public offices right now because of the economy, I think you've really begun to shine, and I, I think the community recognizes that. So, thank you for all your hard work and the many hours you put on, on the budgets while I've been up here on the city council. I, I really hope you nothing but the best in the future. Greg Halliday, our public works director, I think is probably one of the hardest working people in the City of Galt. I'll call this, this guy sometimes at six o'clock at night expecting him to be driving on his way home and he's still sitting in the public works building, hammering away at the work. The guy has an absolutely amazing work ethic. Because of his hard work, the city's lined up for these massive infrastructure projects that are going to benefit the community for many, many years to come. He's been a good friend, I've always supported you and I'll continue to do in, in the future because you do a great job at your job, Greg. We're glad to have you. Boyce Jeffries, I've, I've known Boyce since I was playing Pop Warner football back to the Chiefs. That's, that's what we used to call the, uh, the football program, the one and only youth football program that we had back when I was a kid. But, uh, Boyce, you've always been somebody that I've looked up to from the time I was a kid up until today, getting ready to leave this community. You do a good job at your, at your position, you're well respected within the community, Boyce, and I think the City of Galt's got a true asset in you. It's been great to know you, and I'm, I'm sure we'll keep in contact. Maybe someday I'll get to join that lunch club that you, that secretive lunch club that you've got.
[laughing]
Okay. Maybe we'll start a dinner club, too. Paula, Paula, our human resources director, is kind of like the, uh, the lady that you never see, and that's a good thing because we don't have a lot of human resources issues within the City of Galt. She does a great job keeping our employees happy, she negotiates in good faith on behalf of the community as a whole, and I think she's well respected by the employees that work here, and it's been great getting to know you. Jason, I, I think in the last year since you've, uh, taken over for Ted, you've proven all five of us right up here that decided to, uh, to move forward with you as the city manager. I still have a fear that you're just, you're so good that you're going to move on to bigger and better things, but for the time that we've had with you, it's been an absolute blessing. You do a great job for the City of Galt. I see huge things in your future, and, uh, hopefully you'll remember the rest of us when, when you get to that point. Steve, our city attorney, he's, uh, when we went through the hiring process, I remember the one thing that struck me the most was that Steve graduated from the Coast Guard Academy. And for those of you that don't know how hard it is to actually get into those, uh, military academies, it's very, very difficult. And, uh, I, I really think Steve has carried forward that meticulous, professional attitude that you learned through service in those service academies. He's done a great job for the City of Galt in the time that he's been here, keeping us ahead of the curve in regards to legal issues, and I appreciate it. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank, uh, John Slaughterback, Rick Walters, Joanne Walters, Cliff Lofton and Dan Jimenez for being concerned citizens that were capable of finding the strengths and weaknesses in all of us that sit up here. When you agreed with us, you let us know, and when you didn't agree with us, you let us know. And that, that's an honest person, and I, I appreciate that. I'd like to thank, uh, Tim Raboy for, uh, taking me under his wing when I first got elected and helping me transition into this position. I'd like to thank Casey Raboy for helping my wife transition into her position of, uh, being away from your husband a, a lot, because that's what comes with politics. I'd like to thank my, uh, appointees to all of the various commissions, Mark Yates, Jose Gonzalez, Deborah Longoria and everyone else for their service to the community. I'd like to thank Al Baldwin for, uh, for making my first campaign buttons, and I'll, I'll keep those forever, Al. I don't know if you've got any more of them left, but I, I've got them part of my little collage that I put together from my time in service, so I appreciate that. Like to thank Mary Chapman, Lita Martin, Shelley Martin, Karen Sweet, Ted Wood and Susan Leon and Jim Alfred for helping me to run my campaign when I decided to run for office back in two thousand and six. I'd like to thank my brothers and sisters in the IBEW Local Three Forty for their support. I'd like to thank the Sacramento Central Labor Council and the Democratic Party of Sacramento County for the, uh, support and assistance that they provided when I needed it. My coworkers, Scott and AC Steelman, Bob Williams, Tim Wyatt, Gino D. Robertis and Delman Clark for their support and for, uh, always covering for me when, when politics took me away from the office. I'd also like to thank Gene Davenport for his service as the alternative planning commissioner for the city. For those of you that know Gene, you know that when he's got an opinion, he'll tell it to you. Sometimes you won't like it, sometimes you will, but I respect the fact, Gene, that you've always been willing to give me that opinion. I'd also like to thank my family. My, uh, my grandma, Pat, my grandfather Fred, who passed away shortly before I took office. My grandma Betty, who would have just loved to see me sitting up here, she, uh, she cared a lot about the City of Galt. I think Dave Dahlgren, if he's still here, I think you knew grandma back when she lived in your complex. She, she had a real passion for the city, and it, it's really a shame that, that she didn't get to see me sitting up here, but I know she's looking down on me. I'd like to thank my in-laws for, uh, for always having the, always dealing with the, oh, you're, you're related to Andrew Meredith, that question in a professional way. I'd like to thank my mom for, uh, for always being my earpiece in the community. I think mom gets around to five times as many events in the City of Galt as I do. Maybe, uh, maybe someday she'll decide to run for public office. I'd like to thank mom and dad together for, uh, for bringing me upright, and I know dad's not here to watch, but I, I hope he's looking down and I hope he's proud of me. Serena, my wife, I'd like to thank you for always, uh, always being able to be supportive even though you don't want me away from the house, for being my, uh, my think tank when I wanted to throw ideas around and for being my proofreader every time I decided to put a new idea in front of the city council. I'd like to thank my kids, Kaylee, Lauren and Logan for, for always being supportive of me and, uh, for not locking the door on me when I was out till eleven o'clock at night at a city council meeting. I'm sorry for all the time that I've missed with you guys, but I, I hope I'm going to make up for it. My Aunt Tracy, I'd like to thank you for always carrying the banner Meredith's Aunt with pride. I, I think you do a good job for the city. I think, uh, when you were on the school board, you were well respected in this community and it, it's for a reason. You care a lot about the community you live in and it translates. When I, when I ran for office four years ago, I had a platform that I printed on every flyer that I handed out. My platform was to improve public safety, upgrade our infrastructure, advocate for responsible growth and create a northern green belt. I think I can honestly say that three of the four have pretty much happened in the last four years. We've put more police officers on the street as a council than, than many other councils that have come before us. In regards to infrastructure, we've rehabbed roads, we've planned for the construction of the largest interchange project in our city's history, and we've opened two new parks in the last four years, and it's a good accomplishment. In regards to advocating responsible growth, I've fought hard to preserve our quality of life by pushing a sustainable growth plan that will carry Galt into the future. I've also been a part with, with my council colleagues of approving and moving forward two of the biggest infill projects in our city's history, the Galt Place Development and the Oddfellows Building Rehabilitation. Our older shopping districts have been completely rehabbed in the last four years, and I think it's a testament to the service of all five of us that are up here tonight and those of, those that have come before us that were part of the decision-making. As for the green belt, I think I'll have to admit that we were never quite able to make that happen. It's hard to do when you've got neighbors to the north that are dead set on pushing as far south as they can go, and property owners on the edge of the city that are willing to spend twenty thousand dollars to try to get council members recalled to go and support their, their developments. It's a shame that we couldn't make it happen, but I'm, I'm comfortable that in the future it's going to. All in all, I'm proud of my time in office. It was hard at first to realize that in this position, sometimes the decisions you make are unpopular. You get elected by well less than a majority of the population, and that means well less than a, well more than a majority went to the ballot box, saw your name there and, and decided to vote against you. And I think what all five of us have learned up here is that sometimes you just have to balance making a good decision on behalf of the city with the unpopularity that sometimes follows. I, I've always carried that in stride, and I'm ready to focus all of my time and attention on being a full-time daddy to, uh, Kaylee, Lauren and Logan, and a full-time husband to my wife, Serena. I thank you all for the opportunity to serve with you, it's been a real pleasure. Thank you.
What I'd like to do now is for us just to take a quick little ten minute break. We have some refreshments, and for those of you that would like to say a few words to Andrew while he's here, feel free.
Take a ten minute?
About ten minutes?
Andrew has to get there first because we need a picture.
Right.
And Paige, Paige, will you take a picture for me of them with the face?
Liz, you want to call me back?
Yeah, we'll call you right back, Daryl.
Okay.
I'll call you back, Daryl.
Uh, no, you don't have to, no, it's August, uh, first to second weekend, August. Full, the full, full paper's coming up next week, I think, is what, open, uh, period starts, I suppose, in like four or five weeks after that.
We need to go on.
Yeah, I just can't get the daytime away.
Truckers.
I know we're getting forty percent, two to five percent of our risk, you know? Probably get a more than that because besides the things that maybe come and do to that rate, uh, site. My mother did one of the five, and then I spent it for a year. So, one of my other sort of, uh, songwriting.
Beyond that, if they're gonna pass the Halloween.
We listen to say, well, the liability is on everything else.
Not like they don't want to.
They take on the liability for people they never really, never really.
You know, yeah. Not a change. It's like in the beginning. And you spread them.
No matter what arc they speak.
They're really, so now, kinda get the.
Have to say.
Yeah, probably. Yeah.
Anything new going on up at Pity?
Always hard when you're gone.
Yeah.
Hey, through the day, it's a good thing.
What's your good thing?
Oh, really?
Pass this out.
Yeah.
What kind of problems do you guys have out of the, uh, festival?
I have a fight started.
Okay.
You want one?
No, I'm fine.
Young, young, I still feel like pushing late.
If there isn't.
And that was a bust. I'm gonna tell you, I check for money. We can give them.
I was gonna bring you to get one.
We may have chase some people. Um, we got two. Impounded a bunch of cars for people that have.
They're doing the same thing as well?
Yeah, they got. Much to do a better location, better place. Talk to the other people for those who are more than the meeting. You know, people confused to pay the county.
Hmm. Well, they're fifty plays.
You didn't, you didn't reveal a quarterly, you know?
Yeah.
Now, I guess now's a good chance to see if they'll shout them out if they said they were gonna be a lot. Well, we're not gonna process any more of your opinions, you're on your own. See, the, the interesting thing is I will be prone to city manager in our.
I know.
Love the way they're flying.
That's a great feeling.
Be interesting.
Yeah.
So like all. Oh, that might be one worth watching because here's the date. Can't see what's in the book or anything important. No, I should be in the rest of the.
Yeah, right. How's the cake? Where'd you get it?
That's much.
That costume. You did?
I'm local, come on.
Keep jabbing her. Did you put it in yet?
I question, I question. I don't follow.
No, they stay on to the end of this. No, no, they don't, they don't, he, uh, he's a, they don't.
Go away.
He's lying, he's lost.
It's good. It's all good. Seven, eight, three, two, one, the worst.
I didn't, I didn't give him a minute. I just thought I had a lot of time to talk to you. But you see, we, we just.
You, you get, you said Dick and Catalico, you never, you never know the difference.
I did, I saw Steve, they've been once.
Steve, I have a separation of naming, does he? I bet it's better than my dirty dog. And I get.
Oh.
And they named neither. The first one's the finisher for things. No. You're seriously, this is lit, man. If they never mention my name, the person was tied to the. At least they, and I ran the parade. That's it. Did you get that name? Did you get that name? No. The horses were hot. It was hot, really hot. Um, seventy-five, eighty people. It was just too hot. And there wasn't, it would be twelve. Um, I mean, it was cute, but. Too hot, really. Not one point. Not well.
Oh, wow, how are you? I believe I'm a. It's not her. What? I'm better at something.
Like you got.
I did, I got.
I had my comfort. I had a nice, got the private block, just a purse for me. I sat down on the chair and just.
That happens easy. You know, all public service, public, it's always.
And I'm. Well, Greg wanted to hear this.
How you doing? Good. How you been? See you.
It's been hard. I'm. Did you? Take a knee to him? I had more work this last week. But, uh, I think we do it to, to, I'm just helping my body, yes, to get stuff around the area. Get back my work. Well, but. That's a Sunday, working all day. All right, so what, I'm gonna take, that's one of the settings. And top that. All times, gotta take care of it. Oh. That's over. Do you know, I just didn't do, I just, I have this, uh, it's unintentional. Other things going on, yeah. Yeah, I know. I need to work this week, so. I love that.
And the modax.
One last forever. There's nothing like one of those, uh, for dinner or barbecue. What's on your agenda? You know, I better mention that.
You know, before I always logged on to city, uh, city employee on, on the wireless. Now I'm on cable.
On here too. The binder?
My, um, oh, my, my word doctor.
That one's on.
Oh, because, because I'm on normal profile. Okay. Now, I, I often need to set it for a moment, I need to know what I'm doing somewhere. We can do that later. Do you know how to do that? I used to set it up myself.
Yeah, where is it?
Well, I need to be.
Go ahead. I've got.
My.
I work with.
Okay. I bet it's even bigger.
Nice, fine. We'll do that.
You want, you want what?
I like the coffee. I'm using that. Really? Okay, sure. Your profile shot right there. Hey, what did you think of the Zupa Guardian? Did you like it?
I mean, I played, you know, watch, watch all those stuff. It's okay, it wasn't perfect.
I think it's a little better for the. Maybe. It was kind of has that, the metal just fit. And arm goo, this particular creepy with the.
Oh. So if you need some more. Okay. Actually, I'm, I'm trying to mother change and, and with, uh, all this stuff, it's probably affecting. Then the double client, all that. I mean, she can say this, it's our, our personal. Just by with Yahoo and. It's not, it's not a thing. Yeah, thank you. Missing, but. No. I mean, he brought his whole. Offering, offering, offering to. Hey, boys, come over here, come over here, get up here. I mean, my photographer.
It's two hundred a year now. You don't want such a word. I had him drive, I don't know, wait, 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 so he raised his.
Yeah, it's really cute.
I don't know. It's more uncomfortable than I don't.
We hit one, I don't know, a hundred and dollars. Ready?
That's just a nightmare.
What's wrong with your computer? What's wrong with your computer?
I gotta have everyone come to order, please. We had a little delay trying to get Daryl on the line. I think we have him on the line now. Daryl?
Yep.
Okay, good. Having trouble making that connection via the phone. Uh, before we start back up, uh, Andrew, I said, I think you said you had a few other things you'd like to say?
I do. You know, when, whenever you do this and there's a roomful of people, it's difficult to remember where you started at and circle all the way back around. So I wanted to thank a couple more people. Uh, Chief Lauren Catalico, I think when I came onto the council, I looked back at the, the decision that the previous council made to hire you as the smartest decision that, that they'd ever made. You've done an absolutely fantastic job for the city of Galt. The crime rate has continually gone down under your watch. Your officers have been doing a fantastic job patrolling the streets and keeping our community safe. You've been an absolute asset to our community and I've, I've appreciated the opportunity to get to know you. So I wanted to let you know that. And Sandy, Sandy's kind of been our, uh, our point in regards to solar technology and that means that she's done a lot of the legwork on some of the proposals that I've brought before the city and I appreciate all the hard work that, uh, you've put in to a lot of those proposals. And I know that when I'm gone, you're gonna carry the torch for green renewable energy forward for the city. It's been a, it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have one other person we were going to introduce tonight. Craig?
If I could, it's kinda hard to follow all that fanfare and cake, but I'd like to introduce Dennis Longhoffer. If we can have him stand up. Dennis is our new utility superintendent. We've been without one for about a year and he's been here five weeks and taken a tremendous load off of, of my shoulders in that short time. Uh, he spent twenty-nine years with the South Tahoe Public Utility District. Although they call it stupid, which I think is a terrible acronym, but I'm just glad we can't make anything that bad out of Galt. Uh, he's also spent two years as the Indian Hills General Improvement District, District Manager in Nevada. So I just wanted to put a name to the face. He'll be coming up more. He's here at the perfect time relative to the end up with the arsenic projects and the nutrient plants. Um, when he got here, we were behind schedule. Now he's here, we're ahead of schedule. That's a good omen and I'm just glad he's here. Wanted to introduce him to her.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. No other public comments? No? Okay. We'll go to the information consent calendar and the one that pulled the one item, which was, uh, E seven, authorization of the city manager to execute a nonprofit financial assistance agreement with South County Services. I just want everyone to know that, uh, not, don't take it personally to the group. Uh, I cannot support the, uh, city loaning money to this organization. There is a lot of nonprofits, I mean, and I'm not saying just a few, there are numerous nonprofits that provide services to our community and are in dire need financially. So at this time, uh, the other concern I have is setting precedence. I've already heard from a couple of organizations this, this evening that, uh, kinda like mayor, next year, we're gonna be putting in for financial aid because, uh, we're hurting just like everyone else. Uh, any comments from any other council members? Uh, probably gonna be the lone duck here, but that's how I feel.
Well, actually, Randy, uh, when this was brought forward, I even made a statement myself. I understand that the need for South County and my concern at that time is, it is now and as you've already mentioned, is that in the future, there, there are a lot of other, uh, nonprofits that are in need and we just simply can't, we don't have the money anymore to help them. I'm supporting it this time around simply in hopes that they'll be able to get themselves a, another funding source to help get themselves up and running again. Um, it wouldn't be something that I would be supporting ongoingly, but that's my hope that they can find another source, but we cannot be, we can't pick up the tab for what the county is not able to provide anymore. So I'm in agreeance with you, but I am gonna support here tonight.
And I think that I've always maintained, uh, South County Services stands above all other nonprofit organizations in this community because of the service that they provide to the neediest residents of the city of Galt. It's a, uh, it's a position that they fill within this community because there's a lack of service at the county level and I think that the resources that they provide, especially in these tough economic times, just are irreplaceable. So whatever we can do to keep that organization afloat, I, I think it's a prudent use of tax dollars.
They see the people, they see the needs, um, where the other organizations and committees are all important. But this is more of a face-to-face, um, I see what's going on in the neighborhood, I see the person that needs help. And it's not a lot of, you know, you have to go through hoops to, to get anything like you do if you go out of town to Sacramento or someplace else. So I think South County Services is, is very important. I'm happy that we have something in our town that people can go directly to. I will be supporting this.
And mayor, if I can, I know, uh, I know how strongly you feel about the things you just said, cause it's, it's not easy to, to have to make the decision that you've made about this. Um, my, one of my primary reasons for supporting them is, uh, the years I spent as treasurer of the organization and on the board and knowing how far those people can stretch. I was gonna say a dollar, but now I know they're stretching pennies. Uh, but two other things that factor in my support of it is, one, uh, back when I joined the council, we still had a court in the South County and that's gone. Uh, I remember when some of the county planning maps didn't even have the city of Galt on it. They just stopped at Elk Grove as if we weren't even in Sacramento County. And so I wanna continue to remind our county supervisors, uh, not Donna Toley certainly, but the other members, that we are that South part of the county. There are still services needed down here. And I wanna keep our support behind this group specifically as long as possible in hopes that we can, uh, get Donna Toley the support he needs to get the other council or the other, uh, county members to support the program as well. So, but mayor, I, I know what you're saying. I understand that. I know other organizations are gonna have needs as well. So with that, if I could, I, I will move the item for approval, but fully respect what your, what your reservations are tonight.
Okay. Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? No? Call for the vote. So.
Um.
Roll call vote, sorry.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meredith?
Aye.
Mayor Shilton?
No. Okay. That's four one. Okay. Uh, any, ascertain a, uh, motion for the remainder of the consent calendar?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Done. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meredith?
Aye.
Mayor Shilton?
Aye.
Next item?
Hang on.
Schedule matters?
Under.
Go ahead.
Regular calendar, Culture and Recreation Department, Shop Local, twenty-ten summer promotion for the farmer's market.
Yes, uh, good evening, mayor and city council. Uh, at the June fifteenth, uh, meeting, uh, there was concern by a few council members of having a beer garden at the farmer's market, which is conducted on Thursday evenings. Also, uh, council requested, uh, the special events that they currently have proposed for the upcoming, uh, months that the market will be taking place. At that time, um, that concludes my staff report. I believe there's people in the audience, Anne Ulrich, who's, uh, representing the Shop Local Committee is here, uh, this evening, uh, to add more to the discussion or I'll just turn it back over to city council.
Okay. We'll hear the speakers first. Is that normally that's what we do? Okay.
Um, Anne Ulrich?
Good evening, I'm Anne Ulrich. I am here representing Shop Local and one of the committee members. Just like to, um, reiterate what, uh, Boyce has said, we are a work in progress. We're trying to, um, the goal of Shop Local Committee is part of the economic development plan that, uh, the city has and we're trying to promote our local businesses and bring people into, um, an area that maybe they don't normally travel. So we got involved with the farmer's market to try and promote that so that people will come down and see the new bookstore and see the, um, bookstore store and the Gary's Deli and those places that maybe they're not normally going to see because we have the town of a lot of commuters that pretty much just come and go, um, in, in their regular day. So, um, with that said, I won't say a lot other than on the, the issue of the beer booth. I believe there's some concerns, um, about our first evening when we, uh, about containment. We've, um, designated along with, uh, we met with the Knights of Columbus, who is running, um, the beer booth as a fundraiser for them. And we met with them and with Boyce and we, um, we have an area that we feel we can barricade, um, actually across from Premier West in front of the old movie theater, um, and we can get that easily contained so that we won't have an issue with people wandering around with, with a drink in their hand. Um, we also, we're going to set up, uh, sort of a, maybe a little mini food, food court there as well. The, um, Warrior Booster Club is going to come and sell hot dogs. And we'd like to expand on that, um, and eventually have more, uh, food items and continue to grow and, and make this a successful event. So I don't know if anybody has any other questions for me that I can help answer or...
Any questions?
I, I did have a question. Why was one nonprofit group selected over others to do the beer booth?
They volunteered.
They volunteered?
Yeah.
Cause I, I've got, I had someone talk to me over the weekend, uh, that's involved with the Knights and they said that they were actually approached by the Shop Local Committee to run the beer booth. Not a true statement?
Well, not, not, not officially, no. I mean, I'm sure there were members that, because we have members that, that serve on both, so that possibly could have been. But I mean, we didn't go and just seek them out of all the groups in town to be represented, but they, uh, and they're also, um, very, very responsible, outstanding people in the community and felt like they would run it well and it was a good, good cause.
What, what do you think? How are you going, you guys going to approach if another nonprofit wants to open a beer garden as well?
Well, the committee will have to take that in consideration and we'll see. I, I mean, at this point, we're not large enough for two, but I mean, we're, you know, maybe down the road, that'd be wonderful. I would love to have that problem sounds with you.
See, now, after hearing the response, I'm getting even more worried because you just said the committee will have to go back and decide what to do. And this was my whole issue when this came up two weeks ago was the Shop Local Committee is not running the Galt Farmer's Market. And it, you were never directed by the city council of the city of Galt to make decisions that affect the overall operation of the farmer's market. Now, if that's something that council wants to delegate the Shop Local Committee to do, so be it. But that direction has never taken place. And to hear that now we're talking about bringing the Galt boosters organization, Galt High School boosters organization into an event that is gonna be serving alcohol, now I'm even more worried.
No, no, they weren't gonna be part of serving alcohol, they're gonna have a hot dog booth.
Well, it's all, it's all still part of the same event, which just, and I'll, I'll get into this in my comments, but it just, it goes against everything that, that we created this event for, which was to be a family environment where people can feel comfortable bringing their children to enjoy the bounty of nature's harvest.
And you have other food vendors too that are gonna be new too?
Yes, um, we have the potential of, we've talked to, um, some local pizza places to possibly get involved. We've got, um, I know, um, Gary's Deli is running there, he has his barbecue out there. We've talked to perhaps Jorge about coming over and having his taco, um, wagon, I think, um, also, um...
Someone was gonna do nachos, I heard you say maybe?
I think so. And then also, um, oh, it used to be La Hacienda, um...
Pedro.
Pedro, yeah, there was some talk with him, perhaps coming. Um, again, we're just, our, our goal here is to bring people into the area and support the businesses that are there, plus the, uh, local businesses that are in town. And, um, we are at the, you know, obviously at the discretion of the council because you ultimately make the decision. So we're here to serve.
If I can make a comment. Um, I want you to, I want you to be sure you get a picture of what's going on here. We have a group of people that are trying to do something good for the community. They're not trying to exclude anyone or, or, um, you know, pick anyone. We're happy to get as many volunteers to do whatever they can do. Uh, if you will remember the, the gentleman that just left from the truck show, he was not really happy with what had happened at the truck show. No one promoted it. And, uh, he was considering not coming back. Um, and we've already talked to him and said, you know, if you will come back, we will work for you. That's what we're about. We're working for the community. In this case, it happens to be the merchants on Lincoln Way. And I would also stress that this is part, Shop Local is part of a economic development campaign that this council approved and, correct me if I'm wrong, paid someone to come up with ideas and publish them. Um, you know, I, I'm, I don't know what to say when you have people trying so hard to help other people. Uh, if there's some, if you have a specific question, Andrew, that worries you, uh, we're here to try to answer it. I'm just not sure that...
I've got some of them.
Okay.
Thank you, Anne, for your comments. What? I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait, it's okay.
We had another one or two. Do you have another speaker, Joan?
Joanne Walters.
Joanne? I'm sorry, Joanne.
Yes, my name is Joanne Walters and I had a quick speech written in case I forgot what I wanted to say, but some of it, I don't wanna put a damper on here because some of it, I think some of the council people are for it and some aren't. So I'm not gonna single anybody out. I did have some thing I wanted to read here. This committee here, I know I've heard of them, but, uh, like I said, who, who elects them to, uh, represent all the people in Galt? I know they're a business thing, but this farmer's market is for, farmer's market is not a beer garden thing. I don't care what anybody says. Anyway, I, I just wanted to say to the council members and staff, the subject of the beer garden at the Galt Farmer's Market uptown on Thursday, yes, Lodi has one, cause that was brought up before. Lodi has a, a permanent business restaurant thing, outdoor eating fenced in, but it is also a few blocks down from the Galt, I mean, from the Lodi Market, cause I've been there. They have food and they have vendors and they have everything. The kids are out there, dogs, people come to enjoy the market with their family and all and DJ music is fine. The vendors wanna sell their wares, but they don't wanna have loud, rowdy beer drinkers and drivers. A beer garden here will be a mobile unit, which is near a high school. What are the rules I'm asking of Galt and the laws? Because, um, if you think about the businesses around there, they, they don't promote it, I don't think, because they also have, trying to make money and, and there are no saloons in this town, except, you know, your restaurants, they, they sell some beer in there, but they don't have bars except for hard liquor at the new one, which I didn't vote for either at the Hunan House, but... Anyway, I wanted to know what the chief of police, police thinks of this idea because now, do the police have to patrol this extra area? And who pays for this? The citizens or what? Because we don't have enough police now and they're doing a good job for crime, but you're gonna have people there drinking and driving and all of this. And of course, there's no mad mothers in this town for the organization of drinking and driving, but there might be one. Anyway, I wanted to say when I lived in the Bay Area, they had no business, beer businesses downtown in Palo Alto because they couldn't sell liquor within a mile of the Stanford University. And they even had kids there that were old enough to drink. So yes, we have beer gardens at festivals, everybody's gonna bring that up. I work for the Galt Festival. But we also have to get special permits and insurance, our own security and a fenced in area and that, those are only one, once a year events. So I wanted to know, nothing against the church, because I'm a member of Saint Christopher's and I wanted to know, does the church wanna go into the beer business? And also, does the city wanna go into the beer business? Then I'm thinking about, if they need the money, then why not put one of them beer things over at the Galt flea market to make money if you need the money that much? Because I think it should just be a farmer's market and a nice atmosphere, rep, and representing the people of Galt and they bring their kids and all. So I wanna know what the city council is gonna do because you're supposed to represent the people. So if we haven't got a say, let us know. If it's gonna be that way, then you should put it to the voters for a future date. And then I had on the end here, I wanted to say thank you to, uh, uh, Councilman Andrew because of all the work he's done and all the good, good luck in his new job and all because of, but everybody said that already. So that's all I have to say, except for, uh, any questions, because I, I know a lot of people that are really against this beer business. I don't think, if you move it anywhere, it doesn't matter. I don't think pretty soon you're gonna have a beer garden on every corner around town doing things, you know, for every event and whatever. And I don't think that's what Galt is all about. So, um, any questions? Cause if you have one, I'm gonna have the campaign really good against it. It's better than that. I mean, I'm, and my other member is here, but that's not the problem.
(laughing).
No, other speakers?
Okay. We'll take. Comments from council now. I guess, Andrew, you got some things?
Yeah, for the city attorney, uh, since this is an event that we've, we've used city dollars to pay to advertise for with the postcards that we printed and we published this event in, in our newsletter, what is the liability for the city if we allow a beer garden to be maintained at our farmer's market? Which is still under my definition a city event.
Well, if it's a, uh, if it's a city-run event, then we would have the responsibility to make sure that it's, uh, it's run in a, in a reasonable and, and safe manner. Um, regardless of what the, uh, what the activity is.
And if, uh, something was to happen, like God forbid an accident caused by a drunk driver, where would the liability lie ultimately?
Well, it's hard to say that without, uh, without more information as it relates to, uh, um, why that, uh, why that driver was drunk and what kind of, uh, what kind of events led to that activity, but, um...
But just for the sake of argument, if a member of the community became inebriated at our farmer's market, at the beer garden, got into his car, crashed it and killed a, a family, and that family, surviving family members decided to come after the city of Galt, wouldn't it be fair to say that there's precedent? It's been said already legally that families do have illegal rights to collect, to collect penalties, judgments against the actual governing agency that was hosting the event?
Well, if the event occurred as, as you described it, I am certain that the, the plaintiff's attorney would in fact name, name the city. But the fact that, uh, a, a group that was, uh, rented or provided a, a booth, uh, in the event, served beer that ultimately, uh, somebody, uh, consumed in excess and then, uh, got in their vehicle and drove and, and, uh, caused injury to folks does not result in automatic liability back to the city. Certainly, uh, certainly there is a reasonable chance that we would be named in that lawsuit and the city or its insurance carrier would incur the expense of defending that matter.
Okay. Boyce, um, when, since this was all a, a big surprise to us a couple of weeks ago, when did the, the actual de facto takeover of our farmer's market actually start to take place? When, when did the Shop Local Committee start making decisions about the direction of the farmer's market?
Should I have been probably attending some of their meetings that are held Wednesday mornings at eight thirty? I don't quote me on this, but I believe I started to attend in the latter part of May because we kicked off the, um, a farmer's market the first Thursday of June.
The Shop Local Committee was involved in the farmer's market last year when they had events on Sunday. They had a number of local booths that were set up. I don't know if it was the year before, but at least last summer, I believe the Shop Local Committee was involved as well.
Well, that is correct, on Sunday mornings when it was at Premier West, but, uh, first year we had it, which was at the Burger King lot, there was no involvement.
Correct.
And I know they've been involved in bringing some of their members out, but I'm trying to get to the root of when they actually started making decisions about how we were going to run our, our city farmer's market. Uh, and I'll give you another example. I, I was approached at the fireworks show on... Uh, and I'll give you another example. I, I was approached at the fireworks show on Sunday by someone that watched the, uh, video from the last council meeting. And they said that the Shop Local Committee had already decided that they were going to move the farmer's market coming up in the near future, because they weren't happy with the location. Is that something that you're privy to?
Uh, that's news to me. Uh, you know, initially, the way, uh, the meetings are run, I, I'm more concerned about the, say, the produce vendors on the east side of Lincoln Way, between A and C, and I work directly with Cardinals. And it's been pretty much up to, say, to the Shop Local Committee on other various, uh, decisions about vendors, locations, and of that nature.
Okay. And this, this person asked me a question that I, I told her I would bring up tonight. What other city events, since you've been here, boys, you've been here a long time, what other city events that we've funded, advertised for, and whatnot, have we allowed alcohol to be served at? An actual city event, not something run by a narcotic, a city event?
If it's specifically a city-sponsored event, we've never, uh, had alcoholic beverages.
Okay. Um, I, I was going back through and looking at some of the traits that we've, we've talked about with our, uh, Community of Character Coalition. Pride and community, uh, that's a great one. What type of pride does it show in our community? That we're selling the idea that the only way to get people to come to our downtown farmer's market, which is the way that it was put at the last council meeting, was to open a beer garden to lure more people down there. And then how about responsibility? That's another community of character trait. How responsible is it for the city of Galt to set precedent by opening, for the first time, a beer garden at a city-sponsored event? We've seen businesses in this town perceived to be targeted by, by the city council in the past for events that they've hosted at their ballrooms, for example. We've, we've talked to them about the, the ways that, uh, they need to control the alcohol that's consumed in their building. Yet, we're talking tonight about, for the very first time, opening up a beer garden at a city event. We've heard discussion two weeks ago about Lodi, and, and Mrs. Walters clarified this tonight, that we want to create a farmer's market that's like the one in Lodi. Well, I talked to a council member from the city of Lodi. At Lodi's event, as per, as per his recollection, they don't have an actual beer garden set up. They allow businesses to set up displays with containment areas in front of their stores that are located close to the farmer's market, and they serve alcohol that they normally serve in the course of their day-to-day business. I just, I don't see any precedent regionally. Sacramento doesn't do anything with a beer garden at their, at their weekday farmer's markets. And I, I've seen the farmer's market over the last two weeks. It looks pretty crowded. It was created as an event for our residents, for the community to attend, possibly spur some opportunities for our local businesses. But I think opening a beer garden goes way outside of what this council directed in regards to opening up this farmer's market three years ago, so.
There?
Comments?
Um, one of the reasons that we worked so hard for this one is, if you recall, the one we had last year was on a Sunday morning. And, uh, it started out with a fair number of vendors there, but slowly it dwindled till there was only like, three or four. And then when the vendors dwindled, the people dwindled. And the goal, uh, was to make the farmer's market, which belongs to the city, and no one is questioning that, successful. We were trying to be cheerleaders, and, you know, we just liked the community feeling that's, that seems to be coming. No, we don't have to have a beer garden, but there's nothing wrong with it. There's nothing wrong with sitting there with your friends and having a beer. And you know what? The other thing is, Galt's population is small enough where people aren't going to need to come every week to buy vegetables. But they will come out and maybe buy some vegetables if there's more entertainment. And that's kind of the goal that we were making. And the other point I wanted to make about this beer garden is, it's a short period that it's open. It's not like it's open till, you know, eleven, twelve o'clock. It's, it's at the dinner hour. It's like from five to eight. Um, and they have gone through all of the process that is required to serve alcohol. Uh, they did get, um, the chief sign off on it, because that's the process. Um, you know, they, no one was trying to sneak anything by or get any special favors. There is a special process you have to go to get the permit. They did that. It just seemed like a good idea. Um, and I, I still think it's, it's a fine idea. And I remember there have been other things, I don't know if they were specifically sponsored by the city. I know we had a, a beer garden in the, uh, that's really the block there that was, it was fun. We had beer tasting and, um, you know, I just don't know why this is such a big issue. I hear your concern about, um, liability, but, you know, if someone ate some, some, uh, vegetables that were contaminated, which happens frequently, you see it on TV, would the city have any more liability for that than they would for, for this? I don't know. And they have their insurance. Um, like I said, they've gone through all the proper procedures just to kind of create a fun atmosphere. Um, I don't know what else to say. We're not trying to be irresponsible. We're not trying to, I mean, we, the fact that we're willing to work to fill up some of those vacant buildings, I think that in itself shows pride in the community. None of these people that are working get, get any kind of benefit other than the pride they get in trying to make our community better. Uh, and I'm really happy with what I'm seeing happening with the old Stock and Shop Center. It was virtually vacant, and we'd worked with them, and, you know, it's almost full. Some of the things are not my favorite things that have gone in there, but that's, that's up to the landlord's decision, what he wants to put in there. So, that's it. My, my thoughts on it, and, and as far as Lodi, heaven forbid, the only reason I mention Lodi is because it's very successful. And if something's successful, you try to, you know, model after it and see what you can do.
Any other comments? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay.
Did you have any comments, Darryl? I didn't want to-
Yeah, I-
Always forget you're on the phone, so I'm sorry.
I want to try and understand better, uh, because, you know, Andrew's on to something. We don't want to not pursue that. What I'm trying to just envision, as he was going through some of his points, is what the similar relationship and liability would be for, I think, Arco Arena, Arena is at least partly owned by a government. Cal Expo certainly is, and, uh, obviously, a lot of liquor sold there at concerts and the fair and all that. In Lodi, the, uh, there's multiple events at the Grape Festival throughout the year where beer and wine are sold. I can't say sitting here, I've always assumed the city of Galt owns that property, but I, I guess I don't know that for a fact. So I was trying to judge, uh, those, those venues with the alcohol sales versus the concerns Andrew has. And I don't know if the city attorney has any thoughts about Arco Arena or Cal Expo and, and the governments that are associated with that and their liability versus what we're looking at here and Andrew's concern.
Well, I don't think I have anything, uh, else to add beyond my earlier comments. I think that, you know, certainly to the extent that there was an accident that directly stemmed from the serving of alcohol, I have no doubt that a creative plaintiff's lawyer would, uh, would name the city. But I think that it's a, a long path to draw from the city council authorizing, uh, a booth to be, uh, established that serves beer, um, to, uh, to paying liability for a, uh, an accident caused by the result of reckless and criminal activity.
Okay, and, and to that end, I remember the first time we got sued, uh, there was an automobile accident. We were sued because it was on one of our roads. Ford Motor Company was sued because it was a Ford car. Um, I mean, the list went on. I know that lots of people get named in lawsuits, but there's certainly got to have been, Cal Expo's got to be a prime example. Um, there's, there's an awful lot of liquor been sold there over the years, but I'm not familiar with successful lawsuits for that venue, but we also don't really want the cost of in and defending against them. I understand that. Um, Andrew, do you have, have any other thoughts about those type of venues and how those governmental agencies deal with that versus your concerns for ours?
Yeah. What happens with those events, Darryl, is the, the governing agency assumes all responsibility and provides security and, and protective measures in order to lessen the inherent liability that lies with the business that they conduct. So basically, if we were to do that, we would provide security. We would, uh, have training somehow on, on how to recognize when people have had enough to drink and shouldn't consume any more alcohol. We would, uh, we'd have to do some type of training with the nonprofit organizations that ran the beer booth in order to make sure that that happened.
Okay.
I know when I worked, I, I did some work at the, uh, at Cal Expo, and I remember there was a group that was, was doing some type of an event that, that included alcohol. And all of those members that came on to volunteer to do that had to go through a training on, on recognizing when someone had had enough to drink, so. I, I'd assume that that's pretty much the industry norm.
Could we incorporate that of these folks to make sure that they've got, uh, the awareness to deal with that?
Well, I, I think that the question actually lies as, do we think that having a beer garden is, is something that actually, absolutely has to take place at the farmer's market? And I, I don't think that it does. I don't think that there's a reason to inherit that liability when, when we can just not allow the beer garden.
And I would just respond to that, yeah, we can have this farmer's market without a beer garden. We're not, uh, dependent on the beer garden. It was, it was just an idea to help, uh, get people to come down and relax in the evening. Um, you know, there's no, it's not critical. I find myself in the position of defending the people that are trying to make something successful. And, you know, they're hardworking people, and a beer garden isn't the biggest thing with them either. But I feel like the position I'm taking on this beer garden is to defend the people that are trying to, uh, give their time and energy to, to make something successful. And, and I've worked with them, and I would invite you to, to work with them. And, and I would also ask, if you saw anything down there, if you were down there at the farmer's market and you saw something that, you know, makes you feel so strongly about it.
Well, at the last council meeting, we found out about this by a business owner who was unhappy about the fact that people were walking in front of his business, consuming alcohol. And I, I don't think, as a city council, we should have to hear about the consumption of alcohol at one of our city events, at a booth that was allowed to set up at one of our city events, from a business owner that was unhappy about it. I think it was a decision that should have been brought back to the council, and we should have all been able to weigh in on the issue. So if that business owner had called us and said, "I want to know why you're allowing beer to be served at our farmer's market," I think there's at least three out of the five of us that would have had absolutely no idea what he was talking about, because it was never brought before the council. And all five of us were elected rightfully by the public to make decisions in the best interest of the city. I think taking the position of defending the people that are working hard to make this, make this a success gets away from the actual issue. I understand that these people are working hard to make the farmer's market successful. It's great. We've always envisioned that we wanted to get this farmer's market started, and then we wanted a nonprofit organization to carry the torch. And if we've reached the point where a nonprofit organization needs to carry the torch, then so be it. But we've invested city money into this event this year. It's not the time and it's not the place to turn over the decision-making to an organization that has absolutely no responsibility to the public. As, as well-intentioned people as they are, they don't report to the community like the five of us do.
And in hindsight, you know, I can see where you're coming from. And I think the very fact that they're trying to, um, recognize your concerns and come back, yeah, maybe they should have done it the first time. But I can tell you that, uh, it was not on purpose that they didn't come to the council. It's, you get in these meetings and you brainstorm and you get these ideas, and it's not, uh, it wasn't meant, and I think Ann wants to say something.
Please, come back after the-
Sorry, I'm not sure about your protocol, but, um, first event, we did do, um, the beer garden on private property. We did not, um, we asked for permission from Galt Supermarket, because that is their property in the alleyway. So we did not have it on city property. It was not a part of the city's responsibility.
But, but you do understand that under the normal course of business, our city ordinances do not allow for the sale of alcohol outside of a place of business. So an exemption was made for that beer garden in order for it to be part of the farmer's market. So I understand it was on city property, but the fact that we overlooked the violation of our code incorporated it into our city event.
But it was on private property, though. It was not on city property, though.
Well, that's what I just said. It was on-
Okay, well, you said, well, I-
Is this thing on? I, I did say that it was on-
You said city property. It was on private.
I, I said it was part of a city event. That's what I said. And I, it, it is part of a city event. I mean, I, we can bring the Chief of Police up here to talk if, if that's what you guys want, but the simple fact of the matter is, we do not allow for the sale of alcoholic beverages outside of a place of business. And if, whether you were on private property, public property, it makes no difference. You were allowed that exemption because you were part of a city event that was being conducted.
Let me make just a quick comment. Um, I think a lot, we're talking about kind of how this came up, and I think part of it is, you know, there's some responsibility on staff's part. It was, the idea was presented by the Shop Local Committee, um, to staff as an idea to, you know, engage the community and get people in, in, into the farmer's market as it was starting. Um, staff made the decision, um, to allow the beer booth, um, at, uh, I guess the first one was three or four weeks ago. Um, you can certainly question whether that decision should have come back to council, and that's our responsibility and our oversight in, in not doing that. Um, and then it came, it came up at a council meeting, and now we're back in front of the council with the decision that probably should have been made at the council at the beginning. And so I think, you know, the Shop Local Committee, like, has been stated, is trying to come up with ideas and, and, and ways to encourage people to go down there and shop, and that was one thing, and, and was approved at the staff, staff level. Now that it's kind of beyond that point and we're to the council, I think the decision tonight is, do you want that to continue? Do we want a beer booth at the farmer's market or anything else? Because there were a number of other activities and so forth that were put on the list of, of items that the Shop Local Committee wanted to do. And so we do control, the city still does control the farmer's market. Anything that, uh, the Shop Local Committee has asked to do, they have come first to staff and said, "Can we do this? Can we do that?" And staff, um, in some cases has said no, in some cases has said yes. And so we, we have been controlling that. Um, now we are taking kind of the broader list of issues and items back to council and get direction from council on how to proceed with the farmer's market from now till the end of, of the summer. And there will be more decisions next year on, on, uh, how we continue to operate that farmer's market. It's kind of one of those things in its infancy. Um, I, I have been very pleased with the way the farmer's market has been going over the last several weeks. There's been a lot of, for those of you that have been out there, a lot of people out there, great, great vendors, and so we need to find ways to capitalize on that. And I don't necessarily think, uh, this is my opinion, that, and as Council Vice Mayor Payne said, that a farmer, that a beer booth is an end-all, be-all to the, to the event. It's not necessary for a farmer's market. I think, as is evidenced over the last several weeks, it's done quite well without a beer booth. But is it also the end of the world if it were to occur? Probably not. Um, it's really a policy decision on council if you want that beer booth to be part of your farmer's market event or not. It's a simple, this, I would say, a simple decision. It's a, it's a decision, um, that, that needs to be made on, on what you expect out of that event, and reasonable, rational people- And reasonable, rational people have different opinions on what that event might look like. And we're trying to craft and with the help of Shop Local, I think the city is very, um, been very blessed with the input and eagerness and willingness of these people to volunteer their time to come out and spend time trying to brainstorm to come up with these ideas. But the decision before the council right now is, do we want this to be part of that event or not? And we, as staff, are certainly happy to carry out the desires and wishes of the council. And, you know, nature change from time to time. This year, it's certainly a lot different than we had last year. The locations changed, the days changed. Everything's changed from this year to last year. And I think most of those decisions have been good ones. I think attendance has probably quadrupled from where we were last year, partly because of some of those decisions that were made. Do we always make the right decisions? No. Sometimes we make mistakes and we need to go back and revisit those things that have worked well and continue to do them. And those things that haven't worked well, we throw them to the side and we get on and do it. So that's really the decision, I think, for the council. And the direction that staff is looking for is what you want it to be.
Well, I think your intentions were good, no question about it. But I agree with Andrew at the same time. It should have came back to us and it should have been approved to council. But unfortunately, that didn't happen. Um, when we started talking about this, it really was intended to be a family event. Councilman Tim Raboy was the one who'd been initially pushing this event, got it going and got council to approve it. And I personally, it's not alcohol. It's not something I'd wanna see at this event. We don't allow alcohol at our parks. I've been to the farmer's market in Stockton. I've been to the one in Sacramento, two of them in Sacramento. None of them have a beer garden. Um, I don't think it's fair. We can't compete or compare ourselves to Lowdy by any means. Um, their businesses, like it's already been indicated, they serve alcohol and they're much more well-established as far as the farmer's market goes. And they've got the businesses that actually serve alcohol. Um, this isn't something I would wanna see at the farmer's market myself. I have nothing against alcohol necessarily, but I just, this is something I intended or I expected to be more of a family event for families to come together on Sunday and to be able to go together and do something, uh, and not to have alcohol there. That was really what the intention was. And if I remember, Councilman Raboy had mentioned that that's what he wanted to see, was the families be able to shop together. So.
Hey, you're all looking at me. I'll make up my comment. Here. I've been to most all of them. I thought it was very refreshing, very rewarding. And each time I've been, my family and I, I've seen more food vendors and more people selling produce and wares. I see nonprofits that are getting involved. I wish that everything would have come, just like all the council members, ahead of time. I value the opinion of staff and I value the opinion, and I know that everything's going through our city manager. He does a fine job. I am willing to give it the opportunity. It's just like selling alcohol at any other event. You have to go through hoops. You are required, which we all know, to, are required to have a license through ABC, which is part of the bonding and part of the insurance. And if the chief, as I presume they've already discussed it with you and they know what the requirements are, it will be completely evaluated on a continual basis. I'm, I'm in favor of allowing this to happen. Comments from other council members?
I don't-
I think everybody's finished commenting, but I wanna say one other thing is I just don't think it's a good example if you're wanting families to come. I personally, I don't think it's a good example for our youth to see is walking around with a beer in our hands in public. I'm sorry. Um, if you're walking down the street with a can of beer in your hand, you might, you know what I'm saying? It doesn't look appropriate. So, and none of the businesses where it's at are selling alcohol. So I just, I don't think the location and/or the event is appropriate, simply, but.
My understanding is that it will be a beer garden, so it will be basically fenced off like they had at the festival.
Yeah, but you can't, the only problem with that is you can't keep people within those boundaries and they will take the beer and they will walk out eventually. Because we don't have any security there.
Well, okay. But we could monitor.
Yeah, monitor.
So is part of the plan tonight that the city's going to provide security for the event?
If that's, if that were required, it's not something that we would-
We would, we'd be willing to, we'd be willing to use city resources-
No.
-to provide security for a beer garden.
No, what I'm saying is if the requirements to get a permit said we had to do that, obviously, we'd have to do it to get the permit. I'm sorry, Mayor. You're trying to-
The applicant, if it would be required-
That's right.
-to the local sheriff or the local police department deemed by that law enforcement agency is what the security would be, what the members, basically, the security and everything. That's how the law reads.
And that's what I was trying to say, too.
I'm sorry.
They would have to comply with whatever is required to get the permit. That's all. I'm not saying the city should provide anything.
So we would have no way essentially of verifying as a city that our liability is being minimized?
Other than what our city attorney just said. And I think the plan for the, um, if there is gonna be a beer garden, I think the plan would be that it would be confined to a certain area. They would get the permit. They would have someone there to monitor to see that they weren't leaving that area with alcoholic beverages.
Well, who are we going to appoint from the city council to make sure that they stick to the plan that's submitted to the chief of police?
Well, they would have to. They couldn't get the permit. Um, I mean-
They could get the permit and then not-
Not comply?
Yeah. What happens in that instance? How do we know that they complied? Who do we have monitoring it for the city?
Are you asking me if I would monitor it as a member of the council?
Well, I'm asking, we have to have someone monitoring it to minimize our risk.
I would be more than happy to, to sit there and monitor it to see no one left the area from five to eight.
Chief, I believe is gonna come up and make a comment at the podium. Maybe you can share with us what the requirements are, chief.
Good evening. Um, basically, what they did the last time that we approved this is it's a one-day alcohol permit. Um, and there is no real, the people who are selling are responsible per fine under ABC for, um, allowing minors to come in contact with the alcohol and all the other rules and, you know, serving intoxicated people and all the rest of it. Um, I think one of the things I might suggest is that we might wanna have a look at a special event permit because the one-day alcohol permit doesn't require security, doesn't require anything other than my approval. Um, I mean, we do a lot of them. Every time there's a crab feed or any of that, we give a one-day alcohol permit. Um, so I might suggest, if we're gonna move forward, that we have a special event permit so that the council, you know, somebody can review, do you need security? Does the applicant provide somebody to make sure that they're not wandering off and handing beer to minors or any of that? Um, that's how we normally handle it and that would be my recommendation. Any questions?
Are you suggesting that we set up a new policy? Is that where you're going with that?
No, I'm just suggesting that if you, you know, one of the ways to make sure you have the level of review that some of the council is asking for is to make sure that they do a special event permit. Um, I mean, it just makes, because otherwise you don't have any, there's no leverage for security.
Do we have that in place already where you have to apply for a special event?
Yes.
Is it set up now, though, if it's more than one day? Is that what it is?
Well, I mean, right now, it's, most of these special events are only one day at a time. But I think if you wanted to make it an ongoing endeavor, you could say for every time you do this, the special event permit carries through all the different, the times that you're gonna do it. Um, but I just, there's no other way of providing security unless the council mandates that there's some kind of security out there.
In other words, there's no law at this point?
The one-day alcohol permit has no security provisions.
Is it over one day that then you have to have, if it's two days or three days?
No, I mean, the permit is only for one day at a time. That's all they can get is for 24 hours. It's for special, you know, the crab feed, the one night, the, you know, the lobster and those kinda things.
A reoccurring event, I'd fall into that category.
Correct.
So in regards to security, would you recommend private security? An actual professional group that would do the security or do you think it'd be sufficient to?
I mean, I think that there's, um, that the group that's going to take on the liability for the alcohol sales is going to be liable. I think that, you know, in the past, I haven't seen any issue with them providing, um, you know, some oversight because if we find minors with alcohol, they're gonna get a pretty hefty ticket for selling the alcohol to somebody who hands the beer to a minor, for allowing people to walk off. I mean, certainly, I would suggest we confine the area and just keep everybody in one spot. Um, and then you'd have, you know, I mean, we've done it in other places and we don't have that much, that many problems with it. Um, but, you know, they're gonna be responsible. If people walk off down the street with beer and we catch them, then the officers are gonna be citing people. I mean, that's the outcome.
You know, just because you can make the law fit for your situation doesn't make it right.
I was just trying to find out what the law was.
Yeah. You know, another thing is, we just had a big discussion about, or in the past here recently, we talked about a marijuana dispensary. And I voted against that like I'm voting against this. Uh, I just don't see any consistency here. Um, they have security, you know, they have to have permits to operate. They've got them. But yet we voted we didn't want them within the community. So, you know, it's like marijuana for one generation, alcohol for another. So it's okay for your generation to have the alcohol, but then you're gonna send a message to the kids where you can't have the pot. I mean, it just, it just doesn't fit with me. I just don't see that as being consistent. So you can decide to do what you wanna do, but in my opinion, in both incidents, in both cases, I couldn't support either one. It just doesn't fit.
If this works, if this works well 14 times out of 15, it's still gonna be a losing scenario because that one out of 15 is really gonna put the city at risk. And it's just, it's not a risk that I think we should be willing to take just so that we can serve alcohol at the farmer's market. I think, Barbara, you've done a good job growing the farmer's market. It's done well in the last couple of weeks without the alcohol. Just, it really, it doesn't strike me as something that we need to have to keep it successful. I think maybe we've gotten a little too far off on what, how this all came down. And if this was something that staff knew about and we didn't hear that two weeks ago, then I'm really disappointed because we had this whole discussion two weeks ago and the majority of the, the majority of the anger that was going on was due to the fact that we were finding out about it from a business owner that was unhappy about something that took place. If city staff knew about it, we should have found out about it initially. But I just don't see this as something that needs to happen in order to keep this event successful.
You know, we can go on to this debate, but I think we've recognized the fact that we should have brought it back to the council. Um, hindsight, we're trying to comply with it now. And the comparison to marijuana clinic, the difference there is by them even being there, they're breaking the law. These people have not broken the law. They have followed every step of the process to do it correctly. Now, do we have to have a beer garden? I repeat, no, we don't. But it's just, you know, you said you didn't come and get our permission, so now we're here asking for your permission. That's all there is. And if you decide it's not obviously what you want, then that's what you vote as a council member. That's, that's all we're trying to decide tonight is, do, does this council want to allow it or not? Shouldn't be much more of a debate than that. And whatever the council decides as a group is what this group will abide with. There's, there's no doubt about it.
Well, I think this is actually a very good debate, to be honest with you. I think I've heard good arguments on both sides and this is the way the issue should be settled and discussed. So I'm very pleased with the way it's going.
There's no disagreement.
And my position hasn't changed, but this is the way it should work.
I think at this point, I'm going to, um-
I, just one more quick question I had, and it'll be brief.
Okay.
I just, I wanna hear one good explanation as to what a beer garden offers the farmer's market that is missing. But what does it offer right now if we were to do it this coming Thursday? How does it make our farmer's market better and more of, more of an event that would help market our community?
You know, we, let me try to answer that with the response that we had. The second week without the beer garden, we had people coming back asking for it. You know, it's just something that some people look forward to. Um, you know, and the vision I have is not a bunch of people getting drunk. It's some people sitting down in the evening at the dinner hour. You know, people have a happy hour. They have a beer with their meal. They have a glass of wine. And in fact, one of the things we even propose was wine tasting in the future. Uh, and that's all I'm seeing happening here. If you see something else, well, then I respect that. Uh, again, I'm just saying, we've debated everything here from marijuana to whatever. And I think what we need to do is make the decision-
One way or the other.
-as a council. And we will be, I'm sure the Shop Local group will be, you know, willing to follow that direction without, without any dispensation. I think that's the right word.
I do appreciate everything the Shop Local group has done. I think you did an outstanding job. And I know your intentions are good. There's no question about it. It's just that I have a different view on how I think a rather, no, we should have a beer garden and it just, I just can't support it.
Okay, then, I think I'm at the point where I would like to make the motion that we approve the, um, plan for the Shop Locals promotion of the farmer's market. That's presented to the council.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that, but I did wanna, we didn't really touch on any of the other items that were brought forward and I didn't hear them addressed. Um, is it the intention to have the other items that were called out as well? Uh, items one through five near the end of the staff's report?
One, two, three.
We've only focused on one item.
If you're referring to July being patriotic theme, uh-
And the salt, uh, hot August night.
Uh, hot August night, celebration of the harvest season in September. Um, as far as highlighting the local dairy industry, there's a question mark because we don't know what we can put together there. But we were asked to put together anything that we thought that we would want to do for the council to consider, so.
Okay. Well, I think to touch on the last question, which what does it offer? I think for some people, it offers nothing. Obviously, for some other people, it offers a cold beer on a hot night, uh, which to me, if you're gonna have the dairy event, I think most of you know I'd much rather go and have some ice cream than beer, but not everybody has the same passion for ice cream I have. So, you know, I've just been thinking about all the other events in town by all the other nonprofits that take place in our Shabola Center or in the Littleton Center in particular. And almost 201, I think they all have an alcohol component. All the crab feeds I've ever been to, most of the fundraisers for the nonprofits. And I assume each and every one of those decisions by those nonprofits to include that component is they realize there is a certain number of the people in our community that like to have, whether it's a mixed drink or a glass of wine or a cold beer with their meal. And as they try to market their event, they make that available. Nobody walks in the doors required to have it, but it's there if they choose to. And I assume the decision by the knights and the Shop Local is much the same. Uh, in supporting the motion, I do wanna make sure we incorporate that they need to be confined to an area. I wouldn't include the need to hire security because we don't require that of other events that go on, especially in this size for 32 chairs, I guess, is what they're looking at. So those would be my comments, but again, to, uh, to Andrew in particular, who brought up the concerns and to Dawn, I hear where you're coming from.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, call for the roll call vote, please.
Next, Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilman for Claire?
Aye.
Councilman for Haynes?
No.
Councilman for Meredith?
No.
Mayor Shelton?
Yes. Thank you. Be nice. Next item, please.
Okay, Public Works Department, uh, recycled water evaluation.
Not working.
It's not working.
Not working, it's-
It's not working.
Is that better?
Yeah. Much better. Okay. With me tonight is Scott Parker with Corolla Engineers. And to his right is Bill Forrest, the senior civil engineer for the city. Uh, they're gonna make a presentation relative to our evaluation of recycled water for the city of Galt.
Thanks, Greg. As Greg mentioned, my name is Scott Parker. I'm with Corolla Engineers and I'm pleased to be here tonight to give you a brief presentation on the results of our recycled water evaluation. I'm gonna run through a brief outline of our presentation, talk about the objectives we had, where this all started with the 2005 Urban Water Management Plan update, working through your 2009 adopted general plan. working through your two thousand and nine adopted general plan, um, and how it complies with the general plan's, uh, land use requirements. Um, talk about the potential recycled water users that exist in the community. Um, a little bit about the single-family residential reuse issues and considerations. And then work through, uh, what a conceptual system might look like. And then some of the, uh, the details relative to potable use versus recycled water use in the community. Um, talk about costs, and finally conclusions and questions you may have. Uh, our evaluation objectives, uh, primarily focused on four points. One is to detail the regulatory environment for recycled water. Different levels of treatment require, provide for different reuse of, of recycled water. Um, we identified potential users for recycled water and estimated the demand in the community. Uh, we developed a conceptual recycled water system, uh, basically a backbone network spread throughout the community. And then estimated the cost to implement that system for the city. As I mentioned, the two thousand and five urban water management plan update, which is mandated by the Department of Water Resources, asked the communities to look at the potential for reuse of water within the community. What it was determined at that time, your consultant, I came to the conclusion that the, uh, the implementation of a reuse system was cost prohibitive in two thousand and five. But they asked the city to continue looking, uh, at the, uh, continued increase in demand of potable water, and, uh, the incentives with, uh, which to promote the use of reclaimed water in lieu of potable water as it becomes more attractive. Your two thousand and nine general plan, I adopted a few, uh, policies and had an implementation program looking at not only encouraging the use of reclaimed water, including secondary plumbing systems, which is also known in California as purple pipe. That's the typical, uh, media in which reclaimed water is carried, to identify it as such. Um, and to further expand the use of reclaimed water, including integrating your new tertiary upgrade project in the, uh, the, the higher level of treatment that's available there. And using that, uh, in, in multiple uses other than just reclaiming it on the lands around the treatment plant. And then finally, I, to also look at the alternatives, the water supplies, the community continues to grow, and how recycled water may play a part in that. Um, the scope of our study utilizes the same, uh, general, general plan boundary as we looked for potential users and the market that was out there for recycled water. Um, so we had identified sixty-three, uh, potential users, uh, in a phased approach, uh, consisting of commercial and industrial, uh, users, uh, parks and open spaces, schools, golf courses, and then also fut- uh, excuse me, future high-density residential construction. Uh, now, one of the things we did not look at, uh, in, in, in extensive detail is single-family residential use, where you'd actually pipe the recycled water into individual properties for their use in irrigating their front and backyards. Part of the reasons for that is it tends to be less cost-effective than other uses, the commercial, industrial, and parks and such. You get a lot less bang for your buck, you have a lot more customers, and the amount of water that's being utilized by each of those customers is much smaller. Only a cou- a couple of communities actually do that at this time. Um, the city has to maintain oversight of that program, because none of that water that's applied can leave that property. So where most, most residences are set up, where they're sloped toward the street, um, any overwatering tends to put that recycled water now in the gutters and in your storm drain system. And now that creates an, a permitting issue. Then you need code enforcement to make sure that that water stays on the property, that people are properly irrigating their properties. Uh, it, it tends to be a, a very challenging issue for communities that, that want to employ a single-family residential type of approach. So generally, it's restricted to multifamily residential property management companies that are professional and know how to irrigate, uh, can, can, can utilize this water effectively. Um, but it hasn't proven as successful at the single-family residential level. And in addition, the, uh, it requires backflow prevention. Uh, if you've got dual plum systems into the property, each, each individual property would need a backflow preventer for their potable water system. And then finally, public perception. It's one thing to, uh, go to your local golf course and have, uh, recycled water put, put on the golf course. It's a whole nother perception issue when people have it piped into their front yards and are mandated that they're using it for their landscape irrigation. Uh, once we identified, uh, the, uh, significant users in the community, we developed the backbone of a, a distribution network, uh, consisting of, uh, distribution pipelines, the booster pump stations necessary to boost the, uh, recycled water from the wastewater treatment plant facility all the way towards the south boundary of the community. And then also the storage reservoirs necessary, because the recycled water demand does not necessarily coincide with when the wastewater is generated. Um, so there, there is a need for, uh, diurnal reservoirs to help store some of the wastewater for those irrigation times, which are typically early in the morning. Um, we'd phased the system based upon, uh, its, its proximity to the treatment plant. So the phase one areas are up in the northeast, western portion of the city, and they tend to expand out, uh, into, as the community grows. And also where there are some efficiencies in, in, in combining projects potentially. Um, the recycled water system cost for that fully developed system approached approximately forty-one million dollars to fully develop the system. And one of the things I'd like to point out here is, uh, these capital costs are expressed in dollars per acre foot year. That's a, a, a unitary volume delivery. In your initial phases where you're around the treatment plant, the cost tends to be fairly expensive, because there's a fairly low, uh, amount of, uh, available property to deliver that on. As you see, as the program fully develops, the cost in, 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 in volume delivered tends to diminish significantly from the initial phase. So how does this all compare with how you currently supply water within the, within the city? Um, the existing potable water demand is approximately six thousand, a little over six thousand acre feet per year. This was determined as part of the water distribution master plan we completed. Um, I believe we finished that up the end of last year for you. Um, the developed area, uh, within the existing community is about almost twenty-eight hundred acres. That demand will jump, uh, significantly in the future, um, as well as the corresponding area of development, uh, available. Um, the recycled water demand was estimated to be approximately twenty percent of the future overall water demand. And the corresponding area, that's about fifteen hundred and twenty acres. In terms of the overall cost of, of the, of the capital improvement for you, your potable water system to build out is estimated to be approximately a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. Uh, and that corresponds to, to a, a cost of about twenty thousand five hundred dollars per acre of development. And in terms of the water delivered, it's about twelve thousand dollars per acre foot year. Um, the recycled water system, on the other hand, uh, runs approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars an acre, and about, almost twenty thousand dollars an acre foot year, which is about a thirty-five percent increase over your current, uh, your current plan to deliver potable water, uh, in lieu of recycled water. So therefore, the conclusions that the study came to were that the utilization of the recycled water remains cost prohibitive at this time compared to your local groundwater supply. That said, um, the future availability of groundwater, uh, for supplying all of your potable water needs needs to be monitored, because it may not be, uh, limitless in the future. Um, the, uh, city is embarking on an update to the urban water management plan. Um, it's due by June thirtieth of two thousand and eleven. And that will go through a rea- reassessment of the, the mo- the amount of supply, and the city's availability continue to meet customer demand. Um, that's something that's mandated by the DWR on a five-year interval. So with that, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Uh, thank you Scott. Uh, just to remind you, uh, the recommended, recommended actions is to receive the progress status update, which is the PowerPoint presentation. Uh, solicit public comment, if there is any, or council comment, and provide direction as deemed appropriate regarding the recycled water evaluation. And so with that, uh, I'll turn it back to council for any questions or comments.
Comments from council?
I think it's pretty obvious.
Darrell?
Well, anything we could do to reuse water, I think, needs to stay a priority and keep looking for innovative ways to do it within some reasonable cost effectiveness. So, I remember the, the results from five years ago, and we were looking at the potential of having a golf course and other things, uh, to put that on. And, so I, I know it's just like in some cases where solar just doesn't quite pencil out, but I know we all wanna pursue it. So, I would just say, uh, appreciate your looking at it again for us, and we'll just keep it at the forefront. And, but any opportunity we have to reuse that precious commodity is, uh, gonna be critical. I, I was gonna ask, in any of the work you did, or any of the research supporting it, um, were you able to tell, or do you know if even statistics exist, to indicate how much effect our community is having on our aquifer bases or versus the county, or Elk Grove, or others who are pulling from the same one? So as we go forward, we can judge, you know, are we one percent of, uh, effect on that aquifer, or thirty percent?
Uh, this is Greg Darrell. Uh, that is something that we are pretty looking at with the South Area Water Users Group. Uh, we joined that group, council is supportive of the efforts there to, to try to protect those of us in our own backyard, so we can use the water that's directly beneath us. Uh, I'm not aware of any definitive studies that says who's responsible for what. We know who's pumping how much water out of the ground. You, we, we can document that, that's well, uh, recorded as to who uses how much water. We can also tell you who, who's putting how much back into the ground. But you really don't know for certain where the water's all coming from, and whether our water's going there, or their water's coming here.
Yeah.
Uh, we have recently found and tapped into the deeper aquifer that is gonna kind of change in the water picture here. And that's something we'll be addressing this year with our new, uh, water plant update, to see what the impact is there on our water, uh, future. Uh, it's something that, we're not turning our back on recycled water. We're gonna continue to, to find ways to try to use it. The big key right now is this, is the, the lack of a backbone system to try to play catch-up. If we had been putting pipe in thirty years ago, these costs wouldn't be here today. So, as future development goes forward, we may still look at that. We don't wanna put a bunch of dry pipes in the ground, but we certainly are gonna be considering that. Um, with the changes in the treatment plant now, the year-round discharge, maybe going to a, a groundwater recharge use for some of that water is gonna make sense. But it's something we'll be, we'll be addressing this year in studies.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? None?
I would like to, I would move that we, uh, receive the report. Do we need a motion on this? Okay, did I move that we receive the report? Um, and go with a recommendation to look at it again in the future when it's more affordable, basically.
Motion's been made.
And I'll second that, and I'm assuming we didn't have any public comment?
No public comment.
No, there's no public comment. Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? None? Roll call vote?
Next, Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meredith?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye.
Fast five up. Next item, communications?
You bear with me, I need to change teams here.
I would also thank you for that report.
Changed chairs, is that what he said?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, we're set. The next item before you, uh, mayor members of the council, is a update and, uh, recommended action for the Twin Cities State Route ninety-nine interim improvements project. The recommendation is that you select ultimate number one as the preferred alternative to continue with environmental studies and the final design. Back in October, we've asked your council to order the contract with OmniMeans to do the design services for this interim improvements at the Twin Cities ninety-nine interchange. We had a cooperative agreement with Caltrans that allowed for a joint project to provide for somewhere between ten to fifteen years' worth of congestion relief and growth in that area short of building a whole new interchange. Uh, we're working hard with OmniMeans and Caltrans. Uh, we have tonight is an update of what we've accomplished, and where we're at. And we're asking for your concurrence as we go forward with the selection of the final alternative to move into the environmental and the final design plans. With me tonight is Jeff Atterberry, our project manager, Paul Cavanagh, our city engineer. And in the back row, you'll see Ron Boyle with OmniMeans, who can answer your questions, but turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you all. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to present this project before you, and look forward to your comments and input. Um, we're gonna talk about two things tonight primarily, uh, give you an update of where we are. Uh, the project is very much in a, a work in progress. We're, we're well into it, but we have a ton of work left to do. So a lot of the information is still somewhat in generation things, generation. But we do need your concurrence in terms of a preferred direction of the alternative. And that's important as we'll, we'll get into this. So far, we have worked with Caltrans through several one, uh, group meetings. We've gotten a ten-year design period approved. We've had one public workshop, we plan to have a second. And we've had several private one-on-one meetings with key stakeholders and property owners. We've, uh, completed some modeling, developed traffic volumes for the ten-year, uh, traffic horizon, which is the year twenty, twenty-three. And, uh, have received concurrence from Caltrans that those traffic projections are accurate, or acceptable. Uh, we've also developed a whole series of layouts, of which we've, we're presenting two of them here. They were actually kind of works in progress as we thought through the ideas, thought through the various concepts that we would be using. They've all failed for one reason or another, for generally technical reasons. And we're left with the alternatives that we have here presented to you. We've also completed a traffic operations study, which basically puts the traffic projections approved onto the, the intersection itself and see how they work. And in fact, that information is what is, there's a movie on later in this program that will show you, shows you how that's working. We also have done the base underlying mapping and surveying, which also provide a lot of more information for these exhibits, and et cetera. Also necessary for us to get to where we are today. And finally, we have started a lot of the environmental studies. Those programs are still working. This, just to kind of recap where we are, when we came back to you, we presented, these are the alternatives that were originally presented to you when we started the work with OmniMeans. Uh, this is the closely spaced roundabouts poll, alternative one. Um, the key component here is the addition of a new ramp onto Highway ninety-nine. The second one was the wider roundabouts. It does not have an additional ramp, uses the existing ramp down at the bottom. And, uh, that is what it is. The third option was what was often referred to as the super signals. Um, we have laid that out and, uh, presented it here. We, today, we're at the alternative one, which requires a new on-ramp, including shifting of the main line of the freeway. So the freeway lines are actually gonna have to move over a little bit so that we can get the on-ramps on because of the tightness of the underpass at Twin Cities Road. Second alternative has a multi-turn roundabout. But we've also come back as a result of our public inputs, moved the intersection in. A lot of the public concern was about the wide layouts of that alternative two that was on the original view. The third alternative, the super signal, has just been proven not to be particularly workable. And it is, right-of-way impacts are the worst of the three, even, even the original alignment. This is the closely spaced roundabout, shows both sides together. Uh, and this perhaps may be best shown here. We have a single long, single-lane roundabout onto a new level of service. You can see the traffic. Let me get this to work. There it goes. Comes around here like this. This traffic comes around and gets on this existing on-ramp here. It pulls a lot of the traffic out of the center of the sur- It pulls a lot of the traffic out of the center of the circle, so that the heavy loads here, and here, and this load doing that left turn, none of it really conflicts. And those are your three heavy loads from the modeling. So as a result, this is a little bit smaller, the signal at the intersection is much easier to use, et cetera. Gives us a level of service B. Big problem is, it's all this work along Highway 99. The new lane, the new ramp, getting the clearances, make sure this all is safe. There's also some concerns, there's some right-of-way concerns on this side, in terms of getting access, those details have not been worked out, though it's a point of concern. This one seems to take the least amount of right-of-way of all the alternatives in front of us, which is another advantage, less land fate. For all of these options, whichever your decision tonight, they'll all need additional design work. We are still very much a work in progress. Very briefly, we'll talk about the east side. The east side won't change. It's going to be the same for whatever we do tonight. We have two eastbound, westbound through lanes through the intersection, so you have lots of capacity going this way. The turn lanes from various directions are all single-lane, right here and right here. You have the free right turn onto the northbound ramp, right there, and this is, this will facilitate movement, it's not impacting the circle. This one is a level of service A, with this intersection under both alternatives, primarily because the turning movements here are not as bad as on the other side of the freeway. Again, lots of questions of design and refinement.
Before you change that, can you show me where East Stockton Boulevard is?
East Stockton Boulevard is the frontage road along 99. It runs all the way up the gulf, I mean the Elk Grove, and down into town. No?
I'm trying to figure out where it went.
Before it gets to Elk Grove?
Yeah, all right. It goes up, just along on this side of the, sorry. I've been paying attention to it here, not elsewhere. This is the two-lane, alternative two. Again, both sides shown together, so you can kind of see the big visual. Very quickly, a focus on this intersection, they'll have two lanes right here for much capacity, because you cannot get on the freeway from this side, you have to use this ramp down here that's existing. So we end up with lots of volume this way, and that kind of works with this side, this volume here on this side, which is why it's a little more complicated for the driver. You still have a single westbound lane to southbound, left that spirals. One of the things you'll see is, if you're trying to get on the freeway, you'll notice how you're on the inside here, and you spiral out to get in there. The entire concept of roundabouts are based on setting up spirals like this to get it to work right. This one here spirals into this lane or this lane. This one spirals you out, et cetera. This is also a level of service B, so it's not that much worse than the alternative one, but it is a little higher. Your delay is a little bit higher, it's going to be a little longer queue, it's going to be a little harder. It's also going to be a lot, it's going to be less comfortable to drive through as a driver. It also, because of the larger size, accommodate these circles, is going to take a little bit more land, so we're going to have some more right-of-way issues. We have done a real quick early cost numbers. These are the numbers we've come up right now, between alternative one, it's a little bit more expensive than alternative two. Now, we have not really truly worked through and value engineered these numbers, they're kind of our best guesses. We're presenting them mostly so that you have them in front of you. The big thing, I think the thing to think about, is the fact that this number is about 12% number bigger than alternative two. So alternative one's a little bit more expensive, about 12, 15%.
Does that include the acquisition of the land?
We're recommending alternative one, because most of the movements on the west side are free right turns, which makes the driving simpler. It is less complicated for most of the vehicles, and your drivers are going to get more comfortable, they haven't seen one in town before, it's a good place for them to do it. It is also Caltrans preferred option, which will simplify the process. We can take alternative two, but your staff's going to have a battle to take on to get it through, and it's going to take some time and money, and it will delay the project, which is what the last bullet is. We will be having another public meeting, open to the public. We'll need to continue to work through with Caltrans and Sacramento County on geometrics, a big portion of the project is technically in Sacramento County jurisdiction, so they have a say in it. We will be completing the environmental document, which will eventually come back to you for action. We'll also go ahead and start completing the contract documents, DSMEs, which you're all used to, and we'll start just defining exactly what right-of-way we take and need to take, and start the acquisition spots. This was the original schedule that was presented to you nine months ago. We're pretty close to being on schedule, bringing this here before you. Yeah, it's just, we're close. And we do not expect to miss our targeted end date at this point. Finally, this is a movie. Basically, it's the model of the preferred alternative. We've taken all those studies we did, and put them together, and you can watch the cars move through the process. It'll run through a couple of different things. You can see how long the cars are waiting, and how they're moving. One of the neat things is none of them ever stops. You can see the big buses and trucks that run through them at a random interval, so that's what we've got. With that, I conclude my presentation, ready for any questions you may have.
Counsel? Any comments?
Well, I want to thank them for giving us the update. I've been watching here online your slides, along with the staff report you've provided us. I hope this could continue moving along as your timeline's projecting. We really need to do something to help the folks who use this area on a daily basis, and this appears to be, after many, many efforts, many, many meetings and other things, the only real doable alternative in the near future that can be done, can be afforded, and I just hope this can move as quickly as possible.
Oh, no, I would just comment that, you know, Caltrans is a big player in this, that's got to be a really big consideration. I like the idea of an easier, simpler ease of movement, that's a plus. So I would be supportive of staff's recommendation.
Counsel?
I think it's most certainly an improvement over what we have now. I think my biggest concern is going to be how well our seniors adapt to it. That's probably one of my biggest concerns, and I hope it works as well as your model does.
It is one of the reasons why we prefer alternative one, because we do believe it's simpler to drive. It's not that alternative two doesn't work, it really does, it's very close, but alternative one is simpler to drive, in our opinions.
It's more driver-friendly.
Yes. Especially once you, as you learn it, as we, as drivers, learn how to drive these things, and there are more and more of them are built around, people are going to get used to them, and they'll be easier to navigate.
Any other comments?
I still don't really agree with the overall concept of doing the roundabouts, but seeing as though we've decided to move forward with that as a council, I do agree that alternative one is the most prudent one to go with.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. I agree with number one, yeah, alternatives, most direct choice.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, we need a motion?
I move that we go with, we select alternate number one as recommended by the staff.
I'll second that.
We thought you were through.
Well, I thought I was, I just would open up to maybe some comments from the gentlemen's in the audience.
Oh.
Maybe? Okay.
You had your chance, go ahead, Al.
I was talking about Al.
Timing. He gets one minute.
In Gulf, the flow of traffic is going to be increased, correct? It's going to be a lot smoother than it is now. If we continue to develop the east side with retail stores, whatever over there, how much volume can we shove into this before it becomes non-working, or worse than it is now, maybe?
The micro got to him.
We're projecting 10 to 15 years' worth of growth, I think, growth. I think we're looking at a 2023 traffic horizon, at which point, that's the design, that was the initial 10-year projection that Caltrans agreed to. Normally, they go out 20 years.
20 years.
But you just can't, in this day and age, you can't always do that, because that means you have a $60 million project, as opposed to a $6 million project. Based on projections, we're looking out 10 years after we completed 2013.
Well, this is much better than what we have now, let me tell you. But I'm just thinking of, if we do happen to get more growth, retail growth, the housing is, but retail growth, will this take another 20,000 or 30,000 cars a day, or how much more will it take before we?
The model you're saying on the E is for 2023, which assumes a very aggressive...
Is that like 50% more than we're doing now?
I don't know.
I'm just asking the question, because I think we might have some growth in retail, if it happens, and will that be able to?
Let me ask you this way, I don't know, we can certainly call me at my office tomorrow, we can tell you what the exact number is, the number of...
Well, I just, I just want you to consider that.
Traffic is coming anyway, whether we do this project.
Oh, no, I agree.
This project itself is not creating more traffic. If we get growth, the economy recovers, we're going to have the growth anyway.
Oh, I...
All we're going to do is just to accommodate it.
Well, with Caltrans going to six lanes, this should help the flow all the way.
Do you know what the growth assumptions were? Do you know what the growth assumptions were?
The growth assumptions are... Basically, we went through a process where we looked at an absorption rate. Your current general plan has a lot of retail, commercial, a lot of other development in the north area. We looked at a, because it's a 10-year design, we looked at an absorption rate, we had an economist do an absorption for the area, we looked at most likely, most known projects that have come in, areas that are most likely to develop because of infrastructure, other infrastructure that's going to be in place. We developed those out in the model. We developed, then from that, we developed the traffic forecast. They're fairly aggressive, I mean, as far as conservative, we want to be conservative. The levels of service that you're seeing, that we're posting here, level of service A, level of service B, for 2023, those are for 2023. So there's additional capacity within these intersections beyond that, that we assumed would be a somewhat aggressive growth for the area. Beyond that, you know, there are things that could be looked at beyond that to add on to these, to give them even more capacity.
Well, beyond that, hopefully we'll have enough retail that we can build our own bridge across there.
Correct.
But I just wanted to make sure, and I wanted to just bring the question up, because nobody seems to be bringing it up, and I'm thinking positive here, and I think it's great, don't get me wrong, but I'm just trying to think about the future a little bit. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Okay, any other comments? If none, motion on the floor, first and second. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Councilmember Haines?
Aye.
Councilmember Meredith?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye.
Now we'll move to communications. We will adjourn to redevelopment agency. May I have the roll call, please?
Board Member Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
All the comments?
Speaker, please.
Information consent agenda, could you read those three items off, please?
I can, there's three items. Approval of the minutes of the meeting of June 15th, 2010. Approval of the redevelopment agency warrants, and approval, and the third one, approval of the treasures report for the period ending May 2010.
Ask for a motion, unless there's questions. So moved? Motion's been made, and is there a second?
I'll second.
And second. Any further comments or questions? Ask for a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Claire?
Aye.
Councilmember Haines?
Aye.
Councilmember Meredith?
Aye.
Mayor Shelton?
Aye.
Adjourn and reconvene to the Gulf City Council. City Clerk's report.
Just a couple things tonight. First, the League of California Cities is holding its annual conference, September 15th through the 17th in San Diego. The annual business meeting is Friday, September 17th. That's where the policy decisions are made, and they all, as usual, ask for a delegate and an alternate to be the voting member. I believe two councilmembers are attending this year, so I ask for a delegate and an alternate.
I was a delegate last time, so I would be more than happy to be alternate. Does it have to be council?
It has to be an elected official.
Has to be an elected official. Who else going? Well, let me ask it. There's two councilmembers.
Two councilmembers.
I think that's Janey and Randy.
Yeah. You're going down for a meeting, right? Don, were you going to go?
I won't be going.
You won't be able to make it?
I believe we have a couple staff members.
Maybe a couple staff members might be going.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if they absolutely have to be elected officials. I don't know that I have that off the top of my head. I said they have to be, and I think I stand by that.
Would you want to be the delegate?
I think the mayor is the appropriate person.
Well, I, the issue is, I may have to leave before the vote.
Then I would be happy to do it.
Then I'll can be the alternate.
I'd say you're alternate.
Then I'll be the alternate. And it says you can pick up to two, right? So if we need to change that.
No way I'm going.
Maybe you can find out if it's going to be a staff person or something. Thank you.
And just a couple reminders. Planning Commission meeting that was supposed to be on July 8th is now canceled. The Parks and Rec Commission meeting will be held on July 14th in the council chambers at 7:00 PM. There's a beautification committee meeting on July 15th at 3:30 PM in the City Hall Community Room, and that takes us to our next council meeting.
Comments by staff?
I just have one briefly. We are getting ready to kick off the planning efforts for next year's Winter Bird Festival. It's been a very successful event, and we're looking to get more people involved in that process. One of the things we've kind of been lacking is volunteers and so forth, so wanted to open up to, if there are any councilmembers that were interested in participating in that process. We do have a meeting, first meeting this week, and I know it's kind of short notice, but there are going to be many more meetings, so if any of you are interested, please let me know. The meeting this week is at 4 o'clock on Thursday here at City Hall, tomorrow, Wednesday? 4 o'clock? I think it's 4 o'clock here at City Hall. So if you're interested, I can get you more information. If you can't make that one, that's fine, we can invite you to the next one. Just get in touch with me after the meeting, and I'd love to have you.
Any other comments by staff? None? Comments by city councilmembers?
I have no comments.
Darrell?
Nothing further than again to thank Andrew and wish you all the best.
Thank you, Darrell.
Don?
Fourth of July parade was very nice. I hope we'll be able to get a little more participation next year. Had a good time, I took my grandsons, John and Nick, and they had a good time, so I appreciate all the volunteers and everybody that was there and made that happen, and I most certainly congratulate Andrew on his, in his future, and I know he'll do well anywhere he goes.
Thank you, Don.
Andrew?
Boys, I wanted to thank you and your department for the wonderful job you did with the fireworks show this year. Fantastic ceremony. Aiden Selby just continues to represent the city employees well with his amazing singing voice.
He's awesome.
He's awesome. Nothing but positive responses about the fireworks, so I meant what I said at the ceremony that night. I really think that our fireworks show has become one of the best small-city fireworks shows in the state of California. Something to be proud of. I also wanted to say that I participated in the parade this year. A little smaller than it's normally been, but hopefully we can get the numbers up for next year, so. I wish all of you all the best of luck, and I know you guys do a fantastic job running the city on a day-to-day basis, city staff. I've got some thank you cards that I'm going to come out tomorrow and deliver to all of your individual departments, to thank all of your employees for the work that you've done, since I've been a member of the community. So I appreciate all the hard... So I appreciate all the hard work and I'm gonna miss interacting with all of you, so. That's it.
Thank you. I was also in the parade and had the opportunity to be the grand marshal and got to ride with what they call the over-the-hill game, thought it was kind of appropriate, out of Sacramento and it's custom and classic cars, so that was a nice little ride, I appreciate it. And Andrew, I wish you good luck.
Thank you.
So, actually, we will not adjourn, we will reconvene back to closed session, we had that one item, we did not finish. So if you wanna stick around, I'm sure staff will wait.